Do we have anyone online? Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 4, 2020. And this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call to order, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. For the record, council members Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, John Darling, and Andy Grode are present. Council members Espiro, Darling, and Grode are participating in council chambers here at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. And council members Sherman and Rule are participating with us remotely this evening. Councilwoman Kate McAllister is absent. Will everyone please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements from council?
Sir?
Okay, any from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have a proclamation that I would like to read this evening. In recognition of Nurse Practitioners Week. Whereas nurse practitioners serve as trusted healthcare providers for patients in our state. And whereas in this year, 2020, we celebrate the International Year of the Nurse and the Midwife. And whereas nurse practitioners are working tirelessly to diagnose and treat patients with COVID-19, and to combat community spread nationwide while grieving NP colleagues who've lost their lives during the pandemic. And whereas NPs work to expand access to care in underserved communities, end health disparities, and combat systemic racism in healthcare. And whereas NPs provide high-quality primary acute specialty care services while focusing on health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices every day. And whereas the confidence that patients have in NP-delivered healthcare is evidenced by the more than 1 billion visits made annually to NPs across the country. And whereas more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided by NPs. And whereas there are more than 290,000 licensed NPs in the United States, and more than 2,000 in Idaho. And whereas better utilization of NPs through modernized state laws and improved policies creates better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system. And whereas 22 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and the Northern Mariana Islands have implemented full practice authority for NPs, granting patients full and direct access to the outstanding care offered by these healthcare providers. And whereas leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, the National Council on State Boards of Nursing, National Governance Association, and Federal Trade Commission have taken notice of the benefits of nurse practitioners' full practice authority and have endorsed such regulatory model. And whereas the city of Sandpoint is proud to recognize and honor the service of nurse practitioners to our state. Now therefore be it resolved that I Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of Sandpoint, hereby declare November 8th through 14th to be Nurse, National Nurse Practitioner Week in recognition of the countless contributions NPs have made over the last half-century and will continue to make on the behalf of health and well-being of our citizens in our state. Reclaim this 4th day of November, 2020, in the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of this evening's meeting, which gives the public an opportunity to address the mayor and city council regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on tonight's agenda. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on such an item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that will conclude our public forum for this evening. Next, on the consent calendar, I'm sorry, is there anyone here that would like to speak during the public forum? Thank you. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $263,673.06 and 6 cents for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Spurre?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Grode?
Yes.
Motion passes. The first item under New Businesses this evening is a COVID-19 update from our city administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been receiving a number of updates, almost daily updates, from Panhandle Health District as well as Bonner General Hospital regarding the increased number of cases and positive tests that have come back for COVID-19 in our community. And as a result of those, Panhandle Health District has raised our level of response to an orange level here in Sandpoint and in Bonner County. And since our last council meeting, Governor Little has also issued a state healthy order that has some specific requirements for occupancy levels as well as for gatherings. And so I want to address some of that and how it applies to the city and our facilities. And specifically, we've had a number of questions lately regarding occupancy at Memorial Field, especially as our high school football team is doing so well this fall, so, and in the playoffs. In accordance with the governor's stay healthy order, occupancy levels, anywhere that there is a stated occupancy level for a facility, regardless of whether it's an indoor facility in our building, for example, or whether it is a facility such as our grandstands at War Memorial Field, where we do have an occupancy level. In accordance with the governor's order, we are limited to an occupancy level at our facilities of 25% of the approved occupancy level. So War Memorial Field, within the grandstands themselves, our 25% is 350 people. And in our visitor grandstands, it is 50 people. We have shared that information relative to occupancy with all of our event users. And we've been working with the school district on how they might be able to respond to the desire for families and friends to attend games and events at the facility, particularly through the playoff season. The school district came up with a plan to include additional occupancy down at the field sidelines itself. And in accordance, again, with that stay healthy order, for any time there is a gathering of 50 or more people, whether inside or outside, in accordance with the governor's order, a plan has to be submitted to the local health district. So in our case, Panhandle Health District for sanitation practices as well as social distancing and how that will be accommodated with the group. And it is incumbent upon Panhandle Health District then to approve the plan and allow for that gathering to occur. The school district developed a plan for additional gathering in the sidelines and on the field beyond just players and coaches to allow additional people to come into Memorial Field and submitted that plan to Panhandle Health District to have some comments, but ultimately approved additional occupancy at the field, down at the field level. So that's how numbers are increased over that 350 count. There have been a lot of questions and misunderstandings as to who approves those numbers and how this comes about. So just for clarity, for both the council as well as generally the community, the occupancy level is set, that comes down in the governor's order, so we're limited to that. Additional occupancy beyond that for gatherings can be approved by Panhandle Health District. And so when a plan is submitted and when a plan's approved by Panhandle Health District, that's what we authorize at our facilities. So this will come up probably moving forward if we don't see our levels change or the governor doesn't change his order in the near future for other events. As we're moving into the holiday season, we have the lighting of the Christmas tree downtown and other things which we permit through the city. So the way we would treat that again is submit the plan to Panhandle Health District. With Panhandle Health District's approval for a plan for a gathering, we would issue the permit. So that's what's happened at War Memorial Field. That's what would happen with any other events. It's the health district that has that responsibility. It's not the city approving a plan. Or really, we're pretty well hands tied in terms of our ability to influence occupancy at all because we have a governor's order that pretty clearly spells it out for us.
Jennifer, what is the occupancy of Memorial?
Our total occupancy there is 1,400 within the grandstands. Yeah.
Within the grandstands, but that doesn't actually identify the rest of the green space, correct?
Correct. Right. So that's where we have the...
A plan can be submitted.
Yep, yep. Also wanted to note, for our businesses in the community, we have supported as a city and through the police department, our businesses' ability to make decisions about rules within their businesses. We have some businesses that require masks of patrons and of staff. And we have other businesses that don't have such a requirement. And we support our businesses in enforcing their rules to be in their business. And again, they can trespass someone from their business for not complying with their rules. And we support a business's rules around trespassing. So that is not a changed policy or procedure for us. It's been up to the businesses to establish those rules. But we do still have masks available at City Hall. We had done a couple of mask distributions earlier. And so for citizens who may be in need of masks, as well as businesses, those that require it of their employees, those that require it of people to come in and be within their premises, we do still have masks available. And if people call into City Hall or come down, we have them available. And our community resource officers will also drop packets of masks off to businesses. So those are still available. Want to make sure the community is aware of that resource. Again, we've used our CARES Act dollars as pass-through by the state to provide PPE for businesses in the community to keep our community safe.
Jennifer, do you have a sense of how many remaining we have?
We have, we probably have about 100, 150 remaining, but we're looking at putting in another order. So we'll have more available. And if people have needs, again, I would encourage, before we get the order, contact the city. So they can contact just the front office. They can come in. We have them with our community resource officers. So, and we'll get them up at the front desk again tomorrow. We've had discussion about improvements to our audiovisual because our meetings continue to be in-person but with limited seating, as well as via the Zoom meetings. We have an audiovisual company that's putting together a plan for council chambers that will improve our audiovisual for our electronic participants. And the bonus of that is it will also assist our people who are in in-person in the audience as our sound doesn't carry necessarily real well in this room from the front end to the back end. So we will be looking at improvements in this room, but we're probably going to be a few months out before we actually see those come to realization. One project that we have that will be completed sooner rather than later, in fact, work starts next week, is we are demanding our fiber backbone throughout the downtown to bring high-speed internet options to businesses along First South of Bridge Street, where that currently doesn't exist. This, again, is a project we're doing in partnership with Avista Utilities. So you'll see Avista down doing work starting next Tuesday evening. And so what we're doing is undergrounding the overhead utilities along Sand Creek from the south side of Bridge Street down to about Beet and Basil. And so Avista will be doing that work. And in conjunction with doing that work, we'll also be installing our fiber lines. So we'll have that access for businesses. Another component to that project...
Can I ask a question about that? I recall Jim saying that there's a rather large transformer unit that would have to be installed somewhere on the ground.
Yep.
Do you know where that's located?
Yes. So there will be a transformer box that will be located, actually, at Spud's. Probably looks like it can fit, and it's going to be in the area that they kind of have fenced off where they have their garbage can right now. So we met with the building owner. And we've also talked with the Spud's owner in the last couple of weeks about this. So that's probably the least invasive area. It can be back with the garbage can. And this is a real benefit for actually the buildings along that stretch as well. So the plan was initially, phase one, was to do the north side of Bridge Street along Farman's Landing. And then we were going to get to the south side of Bridge Street, probably in the spring. We ended up flip-flopping the projects for a couple of reasons. Number one, we don't have the building design for the building at Bridge and First yet, and we need to work around that. So we're working with the owner there, and that needs to be contemplated in the design and with the building of the retaining wall and changes down there on the waterfront. And it made sense to flip-flop sides too and take advantage of the opportunity to do a lot of this work while Spud's is closed down at their location on First and operating out of the location on Second Street where Fiesta Bonita used to be located, so that we don't have a business that is relocated and then comes back and reopens, and then we start impacting their business with a construction project. So we took advantage of the opportunity to do this while they were closed at that particular location. So this is expected to occur. Project will be done by the end of November. So we're moving really pretty quickly on this. Another component of the project is extending our government fiber from the county courthouse building, where we have a junction box down across the street, to Community Hall. So for meetings, for events in Community Hall, we will have public Wi-Fi available at Community Hall for our users. And we will be connecting Community Hall in with council chambers too. So with social distancing, or if we have an item that is, we have a lot of public members that want to participate, and we don't have room in this setting, we can bring in Community Hall and basically have an overflow facility and have the public participate in person, connect it electronically here, but be able to facilitate things that way. So it's kind of a win-win for our meetings as well as for public use of Community Hall.
That's great. I just want to add, kind of backing up a little bit, that I just want to advocate for the YouTube channel that we have, that it's great. And I look forward to the improved audio and visual that Mayor Maynard come. I think it's great as it is, but we always want to improve. The ability to do extra homework for a council member as well as being informed as a citizen, it really shows the transparency as well as the ease of access to this information. You know, I sat there and watched the tree commission. I watched the historical commission. And it's a great additional tool to what we've already provided. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. And then finally, wanted to remind the public again that Bonner County Economic Development Corporation has their Economic Recovery Assistance Grants available to businesses impacted by COVID and requirements around that. It's on the BCEDC webpage. And again, we're providing backend support through that grant program for eligible businesses who are located within city limits with our CARES Act dollars. So we're on a limited timeline with those dollars. They expire in early December. So those are some of the ways that we're using them to benefit the community.
Great. Is that it?
Yep.
Thanks. Does council have any questions? All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue? All right, moving on. The first item under New Businesses is a public hearing and decision regarding the University Park subdivision preliminary plat, city application PS 20-0003, which is a request to obtain preliminary approval for 152-lot subdivision called University Park on two parcels totaling approximately 75 acres, bounded by East Mountain View Drive to the north, North Boyer Avenue to the west, Sand Creek and Fifth Avenue to the east, and BNSF Railway Tracks to the south. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. Therefore, at this time, I will ask that council members disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact regarding this issue. Does anyone have anything to disclose at this time? All right. Seeing none, the order of the public hearing will proceed as follows. First, explanation of subject of the public hearing by city staff. Second, presentation by the applicant. Third, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows. First, those in favor. Second, those neutral. And last, those opposed. Then rebuttal testimony from the applicant will follow. If new facts are elicited, the public must be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. The public hearing will then be closed, and city council will deliberate. No new information may be provided at that time. Any questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberations. So everyone clear on that? Okay. At this time, Planning and Community Development Director Aaron Qualls will provide a brief introduction for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This won't be as brief as previous presentations, given the scale of this project and history of it, but I will try to get through it as quickly as possible. And I also wanted to let you know that we have additional staff to support you tonight. To my left here is our land use attorney, Ponda Jogic. And online, we have Preston Stinner with Fair &amp; Peers Engineering, who is the city's contracted engineering firm that has helped throughout this project, as well as Phil Cushman with Cushman and Associates, who has helped us negotiate the finer details of the proposed draft development agreement, which is included in the packet and applies to the potential improvements needed should this project move forward. This presentation, this proposal tonight is for the 75-acre site, formerly owned by the University of Idaho, the south of East Mountain View and east of North Boyer and north of the BNSF Railroad Tracks at Baldy Mountain Road. The applicants are Tim McDonald of KM Enterprises of Idaho LLC and Derek Mulgrew of NW Holdings LLC. So first, I want to kind of go very broad-based, and then we'll kind of zero down into the specific issues, the specific findings by the planning commission, and some very detailed analysis about conformity with existing codes, policies, regulations. Generally, the subdivision, the development process starts, you know, with the zoning that's in place, which is also preceded by the comprehensive plan, which is a vision document by the community. Then through the subdivision process, which is really the dividing of land and allows for a way for property to be bought and sold and ensures that adequate public facilities are provided and that there's buildable area. Then after that, it goes into specific buildings and structures that go on subsequent lots. And through this process, discretion sort of, there's less discretion generally through the process. Not that there isn't any, but it generally, as you get down through the end of the development process, there is less discretion that can be applied by city staff and elected officials. So the subdivision and development procedure overview generally starts with a preliminary plat, which is what is before you tonight. A preliminary plat gives the opportunity for the planning commission and city council to evaluate it in terms of general compliance with all applicable requirements. Principally zoning, Title IX, lot sizes, lot frontages, subdivision, Title X, much more additional standards, design standards for streets, utilities, et cetera. And then related plans referred to, such as the comp plan and the UATP. Whereas the comp plan is a vision document, the UATP or Urban Area Transportation Plan, catch me soon if I start piping off too many acronyms, has actually specific standards within it that the subdivision code refers to. And then the adequate provision of infrastructure and services generally. Can the development be served by the city? Including any off-site requirements that may be required to do so based on a traffic impact analysis for intersection improvements needed down the road, so to speak. And then, well, the next thing that will come before you is the final plat. But a lot happens in between. All the construction of the streets, utilities, the sidewalks, curb cuts, et cetera, go in place before a final plat comes before you. The final plat must be substantially in accordance with the preliminary plat, and all that required public infrastructure is deemed acceptable. Because essentially, at final plat stage, the city is taking ownership of all those streets, pipes, sidewalks, et cetera. And the important point to that process is that those resulting lots can be served, water, sewer, emergency response, et cetera. Ambulance has to be able to get to a lot. Case a construction worker falls off a rafter, for example. Or a fire hydrant needs to be in place if there's a fire as a house is being built. Once recorded, those property lines are in place. The city has inherited all that infrastructure in order to serve the development, and building permits may be issued. Now, sometimes there is some discretion, maybe every tree hasn't been planted, et cetera. But we really have to make sure that it's substantially completed and it's able to be served before we issue any building permits. So that is the general overview of the subdivision process. Simplified. This proposal before you tonight is to subdivide, as I mentioned, approximately 75-acre single-family zone site into 152 lots. Lots range pretty wide, there's a wide range of lot sizes, went all four phases, 5100 to about 12.3 acres. Generally, most of the lots in phases one through three range from about 5100 to around 8,000. Some are closer to nine, some are a little bit over that. So it is broken up into four distinct phases, which you can see, if you can see that big enough on the screen, phase one, two, three, and four. As indicated in the applicant narrative in the traffic impact analysis site plan, phase four may trigger its own rezone and subdivision process to the provision of additional housing types through a multifamily rezone and commercial rezone. This image here from the traffic impact analysis kind of indicates what the future vision for all four phases may look like. This is not the exact preliminary plat that's been provided. And it also indicates where open spaces may be provided for, you know, per the vision. Not that they're binding at this point, but this kind of gives you a sense of the overall vision for the entire parcel through all four phases. Comprehensive plan, future land use map, which was updated in 2017, I think it was, essentially shows a mix of housing types and commercial uses on the site. Now, the proposal, including the current subdivision, current plat before you and the future vision articulated in the narrative and the traffic impact analysis, envisions the same mix of uses, however, they are oriented differently than shown on the future land use map. That said, we don't see a huge, real conflict with the plan in that sense, in terms of the future land use map. The existing zone under which they are applying to subdivide is single-family for the entire parcel. To the north is more single-family. To the west is a single-family with some multifamily and industrial uses. And to the south is some industrial... And to the south is some industrial and commercial uses. This is kind of an overview of an aerial snapshot of what the subsequent lots would be if approved as proposed in the existing zoning in place. Single family, and I did forget to mention that it is commercial B, east of the Union Pacific Railroad Tracks on that single lot that borders the creek southeast of those tracks and which also has borders US2. There has been a lot of history with this parcel, as I think all of you are aware. A lot of planning history originally was gifted to the University of Idaho in 1912 by the 100 mil. And with some stipulations that it would revert back if it was not used as a research and agriculture research and educational center. However, in 1963, through a quick claim deed, those reversionary rights were extinguished. And following that, a lot happened. It was discontinued in 2010. A lot of planning efforts happened, many of them really didn't ultimately come to fruition. And with the property ultimately being divested in by the university and acquired by the applicants in 2019. The application for subdivision, the subdivision was provided for this year on 5/29. Now, there are a lot of steps in between these. There is a lot of additional information needed for a project of this size, namely with respect to the traffic impact analysis and et cetera. Needless to say, it has gone through the planning commission, through a public hearing. We provided action and it's here before you tonight. The planning commission, on October 6th, following a public hearing on September 15th, deliberated and by a five zero vote, had one commissioner who was absent, one who abstained, recommended denying based on the three following justifications. Excessive block length, prohibited with exceptions by city code, double frontage lots in Block 1, also prohibited, but with exceptions in city code, and street arrangement provision. And I'll go into these in a little bit more detail later and subsequent analysis. Your task tonight is one of four options to simply approve, approve with conditions, deny, or remand the preliminary plat back to the planning commission. Now, it should be stated that this is considered de novo, which means you are not limited to the exhibits and the record provided to the planning commission because a new hearing was called for. Additional information may be provided. And we tried to provide as much information to you through the staff report, through this presentation, and the additional staff support that we have in attendance tonight.
Excuse me, Erin?
Yes.
You said four options, I thought I only heard three.
So you may approve. You may approve with conditions, deny, or kick it back to the planning commission. Those are your four essential options per city code tonight. A lot has been included in the packet. There's a rich public record that went before the planning commission, of course. A lot of traffic information, both the initial TIA, traffic impact analysis from the applicant, evaluation by the city, revised traffic impact analysis. And written comments received by the public, both, you know, to the planning commission public hearing, as well as the written public comment received in advance of this hearing. So again, the findings by the commission was excessive block length, double frontage lots in Block 1, and street arrangements. They essentially concluded that certain comprehensive plan policies would be compromised specifically along North Boyer Avenue if the above standards were not rigidly adhered to. So at this point, I'd like to just kind of go over what each of these things are and then follow that up with a bit of staff analysis about conformance with codes. Everybody still with me so far? Okay. But what are double frontage lots? Simply stated, double frontage lots are those lots in which the front of a lot faces a street and the back of the lot faces a street. Do not consider corner lots to be double frontage. Do not consider lots with an alley behind them and a street in front of them to be double frontage. They're specifically where a street is on the front and the rear. Does that make sense? Now, the code also says that if there is 25 feet of common open space between the street right of way and the lot line, those are not considered double frontage lots. Lots, just for clarity, the preliminary plat does not show any of that type of orientation on their plat. So there are double frontage lots shown on the preliminary plat. Block length. Our subdivision code prescribes 300 to 600 feet, does indicate that longer blocks may be allowed. There are certain older subdivisions in town that may have predated our existing subdivision code that do have longer block lengths. I'll get to more analysis here in a minute. But Block 1 was specifically called out by the planning commission as having an excessive block length of, which is approximately 2,000 feet from Mountain View down North Boyer almost all the way down to where the existing building is on the site, if you're familiar. So that is considered a block. As an example, the internal blocks to the subdivision, do you meet the standard? And I'm showing here adjacent to Block 1 is Block 4, which does meet that maximum as prescribed in the subdivision code. The other finding was related to street arrangement. Basically, that prescribes in our subdivision code that existing streets shall be continued into new subdivisions as feasible. Awards to that effect. In this proposal, Aspen Way does connect to the existing proposed subdivision or the newly proposed subdivision, and Ebbett Way also would connect into the proposed subdivision. The planning commission took specific issue with the fact that Airport Way in Culver's Drive did not connect into the subdivision. And we'll touch on that when we go into a little bit more detailed analysis. Just wanted to make sure everybody agrees to the same reality before we talk about the standards that would apply to them. So what are the standards? There are essentially three buckets of regulations and policies that apply to subdivisions. There's a comprehensive plan, which is really a vision document. Then there's zoning and subdivision codes. Zoning primarily, as I mentioned, applies to the lot size and lot frontage along streets. Subdivision code has a lot more standards that apply when dividing land. Provision of utilities, street design standards, et cetera. And then there's the Urban Area Transportation Plan, which actually contains additional development standards, which our subdivision code also refers to in terms of conformance with the adopted city plan, transportation plan. So there are standards in the subdivision code and there are standards in the urban area transportation plan. The comprehensive plan is sort of the underlying vision. Okay, let's go into double frontage lots, first of all. The comprehensive plan does not specifically address double frontage lots, per se. It does encourage traditional neighborhood development patterns and through the land use map, mixed uses along North Boyer. The subdivision code, first of all, the site is zoned single family and there is no requirement to rezone the site despite what the comprehensive plan may encourage. And within the subdivision code, the double frontage lots are prohibited except if other conditions deem it undesirable to meet the prohibition. And that's when we kind of punt over to the UATP to see what it says regarding double frontage lots. And there are specific standards pursuant to double frontage lots within the urban area transportation plan. First of all, that residential developments on arterials shall be designed so that access to them is on the lower street classification. So if you look at the double frontage lots that I had up there a minute ago on Block 1, the lower street classification would be the newly proposed Bluegrass Avenue. A higher street classification would be North Boyer Avenue, which is designated as an arterial 3 or minor arterial. And then further driveways must be 200 feet apart on arterials per the urban area transportation plan. So with 65 foot road frontages along North Boyer, you can see how that would be difficult to meet if single family homes pursuant to the existing zoning on the ground were oriented towards Boyer. And then generally, approach is not to create hazards or interfere with traffic. Staff's analysis is that the, this, the as proposed with respect to the urban area transportation plan, the double frontage lots would be in conformance with that plan. And which, should you find the same, that would meet the other conditions, making it undesirable to do. You orient them towards North Boyer, which wouldn't which wouldn't have, which wouldn't be double frontage anymore. That makes sense?
So as proposed, the application would be conforming because of the urban area transportation?
With respect to the double frontage lots, yes, which the subdivision code specifically refers to. Gets a little bit more interesting with the other two, which are very closely related. Block length and street arrangement. But bear with me here. We'll start with the comprehensive plan, the vision, which is a general preference for traditional grid street patterns and for new neighborhoods to the same charm and comfort of older neighborhoods. Typically, the 300 to 600 foot block length, if you think of South Sandpoint or the other older residential areas in town, west of North Boyer, south of Spruce, et cetera. The subdivision code requires 300 to 600 feet block length. However, the subdivision code also says the intersections of local streets with arterials shall be minimized and discouraged. The urban area transportation plan, which the subdivision code refers to, states the intersection spacing minimum of 500 feet for arterials shall be, is that very specific standard to must be maintained. That standard potentially could be maintained even if another street because of the length of that block. However, again, with the urban area transportation plan, similar provision states to limit the number of approaches onto collectors and arterials. So many of the same provisions would apply to street arrangement, right? There's a comprehensive plan, preference for a traditional grid street pattern, same charm and comfort of older neighborhoods, and generally dispersed traffic patterns, which is supported by a traditional grid street network. The subdivision code, again, same as on the previous slide, 300, 600 foot block length required, however, intersections of local streets with arterials shall be minimized. Same with the urban area transportation plan, despite the minimum distance of 500 feet, potentially could be maintained, at least on one of the streets that the planning commission referenced, which is Culver's Drive. The engineering review has determined that this is substantially in conformance with with the urban area transportation plan in the subdivision code, given the somewhat mixed messaging, if you will. And if there's any specific questions on this one, because I understand it is a bit, not quite as definitive as the other standards as they relate to double frontage lots. I would refer you to our transportation consultant who's with us online. Any other, any questions at this point?
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes, Erin, I do have a question. So the 500 feet of intersecting into the arterial could be maintained with Culvers, but not Airport Road?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that said, with those with a bit more of an understanding of the findings by the planning commission, the code review, since the development draft, proposed development agreement came before the planning commission, there's been some additional work done on it. And I will kick this over to Phil Cushman, who really has been the city lead in negotiating this development to speak to some of the conditions modified in order to better address the planning commission's concerns. Phil, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you, Erin. Good evening, your honor, members of council. Again, I've been retained to kind of represent the city in working through the issues in the development agreement. The city has chosen to memorialize the relationship between the city and the development applicants in the form of a development agreement, a draft of which you find attached in your packet. In addition, in this evening's package, you've got a delineation of all of the special conditions that agree to, or that accrue to this particular project. The development agreement goes far beyond that. Basically defines the relationship between the city and the developer. Talks about the general provisions under the subdivision code that will be required in terms of infrastructure, various levels of security that would need to be provided. And it goes into a number of special conditions that relate specifically to the analysis done in this project. The planning commission was privy to those documents as they went through the conversation. But in response to the conversation that was existing through the deliberations of the planning commission, we've come back with a couple of additional provisions, that conditions that could be included that we think would probably respond and help gain consistency with the comprehensive plan and the various codes that would make this more conforming to the city's interests. The first one is dealing with that long block issue. We suggested, and I think the developer has agreed, that mid-block in there, that a pedestrian access that would be provided from Bluegrass Way out to North Boyer, 10-foot wide paved path that would basically obviate the need for somebody, pedestrian, to walk clear down out onto Boyer at the street intersection and back up. So we think that is one way that you might break up that long block frontage and at least kind of respond to the intent of breaking up the long frontage and provide at least pedestrian access from the subdivision out onto the major arterial and the multi-use pathway that exists on the east side of the street. The other thing that got a lot of attention at the planning commission was basically the aesthetics of the, of that 2,000 foot frontage. And like, there was a lot of reference to white plastic fences and the negative aesthetics that that would provide to the the community who use that North Boyer on a frequent basis. And so, in response to that, we suggested that a more significant facility to basically create a barrier along North along North Boyer and Mountain View as well, that would be a six-foot-high masonry wall with indentations going back to provide additional landscaping opportunities or public art opportunities that would basically provide a buffer between the the traffic activity on North Boyer and the residents living on the on that those frontage lots. And also provide additional aesthetic detail on North Boyer, basically making it more of a community benefit rather than what was being described in the planning commission's perspective. In addition, the been able to provide a little more detail with respect to the off-site mitigation requirements that were produced through the traffic impact analysis and the subsequent review by the city's traffic engineer, whereby two nearby projects were determined to be impacted by the extent of this development, the Baldi Mountain Road and North Boyer intersection. And so there is a a participation amount of about 21%, which amounts to about $87,000 was included as a specific in the in the development agreement draft. And then additional street down at large was also included, a minimal amount of 2%, and that's about $6,700. So those are the additional requirements that have been suggested that would be included as a condition to go along with the others that were previously provided. And so that's the the only difference that you see at this point. Happy to answer questions that you might have.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions at this point? For Phil in particular? No? Thank you, Phil.
That is basically the end of my presentation. I would entertain any other conditions. If you do not have any other questions, the next step in the public hearing procedure is you articulated earlier is to entertain allow the present, the applicant to present. Just as a kind of a best practice, should the council consider amending or adding additional conditions proposed or currently considered, it's it would be best to consult with the applicant on that before you close the public hearing. Because once you close the public hearing, you may only ask questions of staff at that point. The new information is presented, starts the process all over again.
I have some questions, Erin.
Yeah.
So could you pull up, go to kind of the overall map, the overall plat proposal? Kind of reference. I just want to make sure I understand some of the layout here, that it was unclear to me on the plat. If you can possibly zoom in on that. If and maybe I'm sure you could probably answer this, but I'm curious about the 15 acres that are referenced that are considered, I believe, a contribution to Connect Two Land Trust?
I think I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
Again, this is a subdivision proposal. And, you know, as the staff report speaks to, there is certainly a demonstrated intent. And included in your packet is a signed letter of intent with Connect Two and the applicants. At this point, we have no evidence that anything is binding right now. So that's just something that you'll have to, you know, be aware of. The property is not divided up yet, so none of it can really be parceled off until those property lines are in place.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah, and this, my next question might fall into that category as well, but there's also a reference to open spaces. And I'm looking at the, it's similar. If you can zoom in on that a little bit, I can't quite see it on there, but it looks like there's some open spaces in the center. Yes.
So
It's in the the map that shows the phase four. This one looks a little different.
I can bring that up. So where the open spaces are shown in the applicant-provided materials is on the on the site plan for the traffic impact analysis. So a traffic impact analysis, you have to know what types of uses are going to be in place where in order to analyze the traffic generate, right? So the traffic impact analysis site plan, which we have up here, see, okay. I know it's pretty small, but it shows it labels this is open space. This is open space down here as well. And that's all I can tell you about what was provided in reference to the traffic impact study. And I can let the applicant speak in more detail
Okay.
to that when they present.
And then there's, the blocks are numbered by reference. And when I'm looking at this, at this plat, I don't see where the blocks are numbered. Could you just go through and and point this out to me?
I have some backup imagery that I included just for that purpose. So whereas the image I included kind of shows the the phasing and the it's a large project, so they're broken up into several sheets. I will start with in here, this is showing block one and I believe block four, the small on the actual plat submitted, which also went to the planning commission and has not changed since. And I linked to those documents because it was, it's quite a bit, didn't want to crash everyone's computer. So the small circle here, it's difficult maybe to see, but that shows as this is being block one going down off the page of it. This is shown as block four. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, would you mind?
Block six up here, you can see the continuation of block one, and then comes block eight. Block three is over here and actually goes all the way up to Mountain View. The block two, which is that small block between Mountain View and newly proposed Water Birch Way. Going back to this slide, we are still in phases one through three, block nine here, block 10, block 11. The large parcel with the waterfront also is designated as open space is included in block three. And then you have additional blocks to the south, which is shown as in phase four, which if fully realized as intended in the application materials, again, would trigger a rezoning as well as another subdivision application. And then we have the single lot in its own block, that is the commercially zoned parcel that borders Highway Two, the creek and the Union Pacific Railroad tracks as block 14.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question. And then one last kind of technical question. And if you go to block one, fronting Boyer there, can you tell me approximately the depth of those lots and the frontage?
Yes, the frontage is about 65 feet generally. They kind of vary a little bit, depth 122 feet. They vary as well. Specified here in the plat, you can see, so 119, 124.
Great, thank you. Does council have any other questions for staff at this point?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Erin, thank you. I had three things that I kind of had on this list, and I heard two of the three, maybe I missed the third. I would encourage to hear about the Mason Wall and then the split pass-through in the block. The one other thing that I was missing that I thought I, maybe I maybe I missed, but the dedicated right turn lane off of Mountain View going north on Boyer. Maybe that is to come, and you guys are going to talk about that more. Is that part of this new addition?
We had additional exhibits included in the development agreement, speaking more towards that proposal. I think it's here, and I will, I'm going to punt that question to Preston, if he wants to speak directly, or Amanda, if she would like to speak to it if she's here, who works directly with the applicant on those potential street sections.
You know, if I could add to that, in whether it's Amanda or Preston, if you could just kind of give us a summary of the overall road improvements on Boyer and Mountain View and anywhere else that are part of this project, and what proportion of that is the applicant's responsibility?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start out and then pass it off to Preston with a question about the right turn lane. But specifically regarding your question, as far as the overall improvements off-site or off-system improvements, within the proposed development agreement, we have some additional exhibits that were not originally included in the planning and zoning packet. The reason for that is after the planning and zoning deliberations, we as staff met with the developer, the applicant, and worked through some of the engineering details of how the geometry of the roadway would come together. So our urban area transportation plan provides for specific standards of what an arterial should look like in a section, what we mean by, how big are the lanes? How big are the pathways? It does the same for collectors. So in looking at these specific site conditions, we worked through some preliminary concepts to provide a a visual of what this would look like. These are not approved for construction. They're intended to be just a visual so that we're all on the same page about how things would be engineered, should this actually be approved. So what's in front of you on the screen here is an image of North Boyer Avenue. North is to the right of the image that you're looking at. So the dedicated right turn lane is shown to the left side of the street that is shown here. So essentially, that dedicated right turn lane is provided into what is intended to be a or what is initially proposed to be a commercial and multifamily area. I will again refer back to Preston for why that is proposed.
So I'm sorry, Amanda. So when you're northbound on North Boyer, that right turn lane is onto Mountain View or that's onto, it's onto?
It's onto the new street that doesn't currently exist, which would be approximately, I can't see that, 125 feet north of the railroad tracks.
Okay.
So if you were heading northbound and you crossed over the tracks, the dedicated right turn lane would be on your right-hand side.
It's the the first proposed road and then southern portion of the development. Thank you.
Yes, this is oriented with north being to the right, so it's a little confusing in that regard. But it's showing you the dedicated right turn lane. It's showing you where the pathway would fall. That was a little bit of a challenge in trying to work with the existing section there due to the presence of power lines. And so the applicant has worked on a concept that would retain the power lines and still retain the desired buffer of five feet between a curb and the multi-use path that's there. The ultimate result would be a 40-foot-wide paved roadway on North Boyer. So that's from curb to curb. That provides space for two five-foot bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes, one on the west side, one on the east side of North Boyer, as well as two 10-foot travel lanes and a 10-foot-wide center turn lane. So that's what you're seeing here in this image.
And those are painted, those aren't separated bike lanes?
That's correct. They are just painted. They're stripes, which is consistent with what North Boyer currently has. So retaining the dedicated bike lanes, and really the reason for that, because a question that comes up at times is, well, you have a multi-use path. Why do you also need dedicated bike lanes? We generally hear that commuters prefer to be in the street as where, you know, kids and families generally prefer to be on the multi-use path with a bicycle mixed with pedestrians. One is a little bit more about mobility on a bike. The other is about experience, I guess. So that's the section in front of you tonight, that what what we concluded in the proposed development agreement is let's reference an exhibit rather than trying to, in words, explain what we're trying to achieve here. As far as Mountain View goes, and switch to that image. So Mountain View, this is shown in a slightly different manner. What is provided here is a total width of pavement that would provide for a five-foot bike lane on the north side of the road, two 10-foot travel lanes, and then eight feet of parking along the south side of Mountain View. Then you have a curb, and then immediately adjacent to the curb is a multi-use path. The intent with that was to provide continuity to what is intended to be a trail network system with the Connect Two Land Trust, as well as continuation and connectivity to the Sand Creek path. So going over Popsicle Bridge and down into that overall Sand Creek loop that you'll see. What this section provides is flexibility. So in the future, if Mount if Mountain View required. I don't know who that is. Okay. So in the future, if Mountain View was receiving congestion from a traffic perspective, we have flexibility to re-strike this configuration to eliminate some of that parking and to provide a necessary, if it's necessary at that time, dedicated turn lane that would exist on Mountain View, enabling a free right essentially to go northbound and people to queue into a dedicated left turn lane. So that the asphalt width is there to provide both options and flexibility based upon actual conditions. With that, I will maybe pass it off to Preston if you want to just briefly explain the purpose of the dedicated right turn lane, just north of the railroad tracks, please.
Sure. Thanks, Amanda. So the right turn lanes, just to clarify, the the right turn lanes are not needed from a reduction in delay to get that intersection to operate at a acceptable level of service, which is what in the traffic engineering world, how they base impacts to intersections off of. Because right turns generally have a pretty low amount of delay associated with that movement. However, given our review of this and in discussions with the city, we believe it would be important to put in these right turn lanes because of the speed differential from the northbound through lanes and and the amount of time it takes for those right turns to decelerate and then make their movement. And in addition to that, since there is a multi-use path here along this road, there will be crossings at that intersection of Ebbet Way, north and south, where the multi-use path crosses. And in the event that there are individuals crossing that, those right turns would need to yield to those users, pedestrians and bikes, which which would make them queue up and and back up. And if there was not not a right turn lane, that queue would extend potentially back to the tracks. We we want to eliminate that potential as much as possible, given the safety precautions there. And as well, the right turns, get the get the right turned cars out of the the movement of through lanes, reduces conflicts, potential rear end crashes, and and provides some additional storage for that movement I spoke about with those crossings. So you'll see there on that exhibit, there's 50 feet of storage length and then 125 feet of taper, which is for the deceleration length, and then the 50 feet of storage to make that movement.
Thank you, Preston. Could you also comment on Baylor Road and Mountain View, why there's no recommended right turn lane there? And maybe you answered it with the tracks there to the south. That's a key difference with Ebbet Way, but can you comment on that, please?
Yeah, and you're right, the the key there is the tracks, trying to reduce any potential queuing that would happen there. You know, up there to the north, as we go further north at Baylor and and at Mountain View, there, the applicant's traffic study did not indicate there was an issue with right turns, as I kind of indicated before. It's really not an issue of reducing delay as much as it is just getting traffic out of that movement. And our concern down to the south was the proximity to the tracks. So, you know, while it would be nice to have, it's not a need to have in the other two locations.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't know who'd be the right person to speak to about the
I don't know who'd be the right person to speak to about the fencing along the hole that'd be filled. If you can kind of walk me through that more, it's kind of hard for me. You know, a project this big, just seeing Boyer just have this large fence, can you, maybe I didn't understand fully what kind of fencing was decided on or what it would look like? A hallway, part of the way, maybe Phil, you could speak to that? What type of negotiations we worked through with the applicant?
Phil?
I was muted, so I was trying to get back on. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think the issue that we kind of addressed again is the aesthetics of the arterial, both that and the situation along Mountain View. One of the issues with respect to the cross-section that was developed in that negotiated process about the engineering design is as the right-of-way was divided up into its various uses, the one piece of the puzzle that got left out was the planting strip, you know, the landscape buffer that normally would be expected to go along that frontage. And so in an effort to try to figure out some way to get part of that back anyway, was to look at a system where you had a permanent structure going along that frontage with recesses going back to some degree into the private property that could be used for landscaping purposes and/or as we indicated in the draft agreement, public art. And so that theory was then basically taken along around the corner onto North Boyer, basically to continue that aesthetic view and buffering of the adjacent properties along that frontage as well. Again, with the articulation of the landscaping recesses, if you will, would break up that 2,000-foot extent along there to provide some relief to the lateral nature of what it looked like. So that's basically the theory behind it. And I know that the developer has not agreed to that. But again, that was our theory in proposing that kind of solution to what had evolved upon Mountain View and discussions of the planning commission.
Thank you, Phil. And I guess, you know, kind of a follow-up question to that. Is there any kind of, is there any standard, any design standard that we could apply to that? Because it, the way that it's stated in here seems rather vague. What would be the standard of articulation? I saw the 50 every 50 feet is what I recall. I'm looking for it in here now.
Receses, yeah, and I didn't copy the whole provision. It's rather long. We can bring it up and look at it specifically if you like. But essentially, we were kind of utilizing another area of code, a couple of areas of code. One that gives the council and planning commission authority to require fencing, but also there's some other unrelated, it's in zoning code, but it kind of provides some standards for fences and walls. So the articulation every 25 feet, we kind of modified that to incorporate recesses and projections every 50 feet. Now, in order to also provide for some level of flexibility, we included a provision that essentially states, you know, alterations may be authorized so long as the intent is met of, you know, the aesthetics and landscaping intent is met. And also that, you know, pending the city may engage a committee to, or establish a committee to review it so that it's not, you know, one person at the city making this substantial decision, which will, you know, be viable by everyone for many, many years to come.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
If I may, the provision that's being referenced is in the proposed draft development agreement at Section 12E2. If any of you would like to reference the full terms and conditions that are being proposed within the development agreement. I could read it to you if you'd like.
Yeah, is it, can you tell me what page it's on?
Yeah, page five.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read that for the record and me benefit others here?
Sure. So the proposed condition says that frontage improvements at this location shall be in accordance with city code and standards. Developers shall construct a six-foot-high masonry wall along the entire frontage of North Boyer Avenue, located on private property to provide for visual interest along the edge of the development, which shall be maintained in perpetuity by the HOA. The wall shall have recesses and/or projections at intervals not to exceed 50 feet, which shall be sufficient in depth to accommodate landscaping and/or public art. Further, the wall shall provide variety and articulation at intervals not exceeding 25 feet through at least one of the following methods. One, expression of structure such as post, column, or plaster. Two, variation of material. The specific design of the wall shall be approved by city. Minor variations in the standards above may be authorized so long as the purpose of the requirement is met. The city reserves the right to seek input from a volunteer citizen committee to review designs submitted.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And was in development agreement and negotiations, was consideration of a buffer presented or discussed with the applicant?
Are you referring to the like a 25-foot common open space between the street right-of-way and the property line? Yes, yeah. So that's a significant amount of space that would likely precipitate a whole new redesign. So that certainly is an option. And if that, if the applicant decided to come back with something that would meet that standard, they would no longer be considered double frontage lots in that particular, that would even change the, change the analysis with respect to that provision specifically.
Okay. Are there any further questions from council? Okay. At this time, I invite the applicant to come give us a presentation, please.
Well, listen, just so I understand, is that correct? There's three participants on the video that may be participating in this hearing. Is that right? Or am I misunderstanding that number up there?
Are you asking about council members?
No, no, just members of the public.
Members of the public online currently. Attendees are 13.
Thanks. Mayor, council members and those online, thank you so much for your time tonight. It's a privilege to be before you finally for this preliminary plat hearing for University Park. My name's Jeremy Grimm. I am the owner of Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting. And as you probably know, the former planning and community development director for the city of Sandpoint from 2007 to 2015. I'm impressed by staff's thorough overview. And generally, your staff's done a great job responding to our needs, addressing many of these concerns and working through this process. However, I will state that there are still a few sticking points that I will go over tonight. In event any time you have questions, feel free to interrupt or ask. Aaron, could you throw up my presentation, please? Is there any way to make that full screen just so people can see it more accurately without the previews on the left? And while Aaron's getting that ready, I will note that although this is technically a preliminary plat, I'm a bit amazed at how far we've come. We've got over $200,000 of design and engineering into this, water lines, sewer lines, roads, traffic analysis and whatnot. And it feels like we're pretty pregnant at this point. But if you're calling it a preliminary plat, that's just wonderful. So. You want to slide two there, Aaron? Thank you. So a lot's changed since our first application, our only application, back on May 22nd. And today, tonight, I'm going to go through a couple of things here. The introduction of our plan and our project, its history, what the plan is and the phasing and the outcomes, and finally, some comments about our concerns. As I mentioned, a lot has changed in the last six months, most notably terribly excited to, and you've all heard it, have successfully worked with Kinnick Sioux Land Trust to negotiate a land dedication that will be a meets and bounds dedication that will dedicate about 27% of this land is open space, forever protected and available to the members of the Sandpoint community. So that's really exciting. I mentioned that just because in the application, we unsuccessfully, we're trying to work with the city to trade and negotiate dedication of parkland that you may or may not need in this region as part of this, but that didn't work out so well. Next slide, please. So just for your understanding, and Aaron covered a lot of this, but a preliminary plat and subdivision application is based on approval criteria found in Sandpoint and Idaho code. Evidence is to be reviewed and considered, and determinations are based on the findings of facts that the criteria, and that means the very specific standards in Sandpoint city code have been satisfied. And I say that just because you can't make up standards or designs or materials or anything that doesn't exist in code. You can't just do that. You have to, it's almost like applying for a driver's license. If you meet the, if you pass the test of the size and the layout, you should expect approval. We've been at this for two years, the planning process, six months waiting for this public hearing. The developer is a local developer. Tim has done nine subdivisions in Sandpoint over the last 25 years. He's a fourth-generation Sandpoint, Sandpointonian, and he cares deeply about this community as much as any of us. This project will include work from 126 contractors and subcontractors. And throughout this process, we've applied as best as possible the vision of the city-crafted 2018 U of I master plan, which I believe involved hundreds of residents and cost the city tens of thousands of dollars to produce. 27% of the land, all of it which is developable with the right Army Corps permits, is going to be preserved upon dedication to Kinnick Sioux Land Trust in perpetuity. And that's going to enhance certainly the water quality and riparian corridor along Sand Creek. Next slide, please. So this is pretty high level, 75 acres. It's currently zoned residential, single-family, west of the railroad tracks. Commercial B east of the railroad tracks. Comprehensive plan is a mixture of CA3, CA3B, and CA4. This is being proposed in four phases totaling 152 lots. The largest developable lot is phase four down on the southern end at 6.1 acres, and the smallest is 5,100 square feet. 51 of the lots are less than 6,500 square feet, which we believe is the best way to achieve affordability in this community by reducing the overall amount of land associated with the home. And there's a mixture of other lots ranging from 6,500 square feet to 9,000 square feet. I mentioned in total, over 16 acres are being proposed for conservation with public access. In the timeframe for development, we're looking at 2020 to 2025. Next slide, please.
That's for the first three phases?
That's for all four phases.
Okay.
That's just current zoning that Aaron had already showed you. Residential, single-family to the north, to the west, with a mixture of other industrial, commercial, and industrial business parks, technical park. Next slide. There's a lot of history with this property. Aaron covered most of them, but a couple of them were left out. One of them in that, in 2007, the Wild Rose Foundation actually had a planned unit development approved. It was one of my first projects as a planning director here. And that was a significant development for this site. It allowed construction with the majority of buildings on the college campus at 45 feet with three stories to the peak, with a campus clock tower and performing arts hall allowed a height of 50 feet in addition to a 45-foot three-story building height for the proposal, for the proposed high school that was going to be allowed. And of course, the Great Recession happened. And moving on to 2010, you know, the university divested themselves to the property. And we had a group that was put together that looked at future uses on the site. 2013, a conditional use permit to allow a variety of recreational activities and educational activities on the site. And most of you know the rest of it. 2018, the Sandpoint master plan for the U of I property was drafted, created through a lengthy public process and presented as the vision that the city has for the site. 2019, Sandpoint failed to secure the property at a sale. And here we are today, after six months of our application working through the city. We're addressing you. Next slide, please. Just a couple of illustrations here. On the left, you'll see that plan that I mentioned, the 2007 PUD, CUP, for the University of Idaho Extension Campus that never happened. And to the right, another rendering, just kind of going on this theme, what had been envisioned for the site prepared by the University of Idaho's architectural students. Next slide, please. This slide is just highlighted, if you haven't read it or if you're not aware, the University of Idaho Property Community Visioning Report created by the city of Sandpoint. And it speaks specifically of Boyer Avenue's prominence as a multimodal corridor, retaining recreation on-site, preserving environmentally sensitive habitat, integrate regional and local trail systems, alleviate tight housing market, on and on and on. And in general, as you stated in your document that's on the website, see his website to the right there, this plan will also serve as a publicly adopted statement of intent assuring potential partners in the property's development for outcome of the state's site's transition. So we certainly heard the city loud and clear when you developed and put forward that presentation, that vision. And we believe this proposal meets that, actually exceeds it in many ways based on the current market conditions and housing need for our community. Next slide, please. Couple of blurbs from that master plan as well. And, you know, it talks about this concept of a community garden, which we've hopefully achieved through this subsequent dedication to Kinnick Sioux of the central open space that I'll go over in just a minute. And that the creekside areas would be preserved as well. The thick woods and steep slopes adjacent to Sand Creek argue for preservation, it says. Next slide. Just a final touch on this master plan. It talks about potential densities that the city would expect and advocate for on the site. And you can see there that in some areas, it was talking about as many as 120 dwelling units per acre. That's very dense. But I want to point out to the right, the stakeholders were involved. They said that any housing developed on the site should blend in with the character of the existing neighborhood. And I mentioned that word neighborhood because it's not talking about Sandpoint neighborhoods. It's talking about the neighborhood. And when you think about a neighborhood, you think about what's in proximity to the site. And if you look to the north, especially up Alexander Way and Spring Haven, this is what, Moon Ridge, these are all the neighborhoods that are adjacent to the site that they hope that it will blend in with. And we feel that our design is very similar to all of those in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And finally here, just if you haven't familiarized yourself with this plan, this vision, here it is on the right from the city. And you see the central area of open space, the Sand Creek preservation, and of course, the density throughout. Next slide, please. Getting into the fun stuff here. Getting into the fun stuff here. So this next slide speaks specifically to the letter of intent that we have executed with Kinnick's Land Trust. In total, there would be three parcels dedicated to Kinnick's parcel one, two and three. You'll see those parcel one is adjacent to Boyer. It's a relatively small 0.23 acres. If you're familiar with the site, it's sort of where the drainage starts there and comes across the road. Parcel two is four acres, plus or minus that central area. Most notably, there's some ponds there right now, some water features. And finally parcel three, 12.3 acres, which is essentially everything from the easternmost point all the way north on that west side of the tracks. And those are highlighted.
Side of the tracks?
On the west side of the tracks. You can, those are highlighted here and I'm going to step away for a second. The parcel one, that box, parcel two, that box and parcel three right there. In total, this would represent 27% of the land. And I want to emphasize for no other reason that the reason we haven't dedicated this yet is because we haven't received preliminary or final plat approval. And of course, you know, this project is, is based on the layout that we have. And this land is developable. You could certainly secure Army Corps of Engineer permits to develop this land. And it could all be reconfigured in a preliminary plat in a way that would not allow this open space or would not provide for it. So that's why it hasn't been dedicated. We fully intend to execute that and dedicate this land if the preliminary plat is approved. Next slide.
Jeremy, that parcel three, does that front Sand Creek? And then it kind of goes up the hills, up the slope to, to the plateau there or?
Yeah, Mayor, if I can, if you can remember to, or I'll remember to come back to that as we get into the actual lot configuration. I'll show you how the axis comes across through this whole area.
Thank you.
Should provide connectivity and continuity through it. Now there, there are no trail plans yet. It's much like Pine Street Woods in the sense that Kinnick's will work with the community to get public input and feedback on, on how this open space will be utilized. And Katie Cox is here, Executive Director of Kinnick's, and I'll let her speak to that a little bit. But it's, it's super exciting and incredibly, you know, enduring for, for our community to have this largest piece of open space potentially created through this process. Next slide, please. Apologies for the delay. So just high level here, we believe that our, our proposal meets the economic development goals of the comprehensive plan. It's going to provide for housing. It's going to provide for environmental conservation. It's going to mirror the community character in their vicinity. And most importantly, it's going to provide housing that is walkable and easily served and efficiently served through both infrastructure and transportation right in the heart of Sandpoint. Next slide, please. So it's a phased project, you can imagine. This is not easy to build and develop. But you can see phase one would start in the northeast corner, 47 lots with the traffic entering into Mountain View. Phase two would be 75 lots moving to the center of the property, which is going to be when the first connection to Boyer is made. Phase three, 22 lots in that northeast corner, the green here. And then finally, phase four, four lots and that second connection to Ebbett Way, the new Ebbett Way extended on the southern portion of the property. And I just want to emphasize right now, this is going to get a little into the weeds in a second. But that phase four, right now it's zoned residential, single family. When my clients originally approached the city, they said, what is your vision for this site? At that time, they said, we don't know. So let's plan for the moon, shoot for the moon. So they said, maybe we'll have some commercial down there and some other things. The traffic impact analysis, if it's not clear to you, was run and those members are assuming that both the zone change will occur on that southern portion of the property and that significant commercial activity will be developed on that site. And I'm going to, I just want to set the stage here. I'll leave it for a second. I'm going to come back to that in a moment because that's an area of concern that we have with the development agreement. Next slide, please. The planning and design of this, traffic was done by DEA, David Evans and Associates in October of 2019. Peak trips were identified and measured based not on the current proposals I mentioned, but on a very ambitious plan that would include commercial and multifamily development on the southern portion of the site. Stormwater was done by Century West Engineering. Runoff volume and rate will be lower than the pre-development state with enhanced filtration of the runoff through the wetlands and some of the cattails. The wetlands will be identified and have been identified and all Army Corps of Engineering permitting will be secured. Utilities have been designed by Century West Engineer, water and sewer lift station analysis has been completed and sized to handle even the most ambitious future plans on the site. And finally, parkland has been thoughtfully laid out in partnership with Kinnick's Land Trust after unsuccessful attempts to negotiate with the city to exchange parkland on this site. Next slide, please. So the outcomes, this project's going to have a lot of positive impact to the general fund of, and the impact fee fund for the city of Sandpoint. First and foremost, various offsite improvements are tied to the final plat. Those include signalization fee for Larch and 95 or US2, I'm sorry, US2. They also include a Boyer and Baldi intersection signalization and upgrades of the corridor between Boyer and the drive entrances in Mountain View. In terms of development impact fees, it built out as envisioned. This will contribute $550,000 to your park development impact fees, 112,000 to your fire development impact fees, 62,000 to your police development impact fees, $375,000 to your street and fees, and $104,000 to your pathways development impact fees. So you should have lots of money to cure all your deficiencies and provide a lot of new expansion of services throughout the city. Next slide, please. In addition to impact fees, this property is going to generate over $750,000 of annual property taxes. This is a bit small, but based on a build out of 303 units and assuming that 20% of those are renter homeowner units, not calling for Idaho homeowner exemption. This project will again bring in $752,000 of annual taxes. And based on the current standpoint levy, that would be about $300,000 a year to the city's standpoint over 10 years, $3 million. Next slide. So we do have some comments and concerns about the traffic. This first exhibit that, and I'm entering this entire presentation into the record as exhibit, Aaron and anyone else who needs to understand that. You know, this is a illustration and an excerpt from an existing agreement that the city has with the Idaho Department of Transportation. I just want to emphasize, as you all know probably, right now, the level of service in the city has been established at level service D. And because the city's desired, established that as a desired power performance throughout the whole system, we have some concerns because engineering review of our application and traffic studies state that the level of service will not drop below D on Boyer in the absence of a right turn into Ebbett. So that southern right turn just after the tracks, I'm going to come back to that, but that's something we have some concerns with. Staff has asked for it in the development agreement. We would like to discuss the phasing and timing of that and make it conditioned, but I'll get back there in just a moment. Next slide, please. And just for your, you know, information, we hired David Evans and Associates to do our traffic analysis as we were recommended to do so by the city staff. David Evans did the city of Sandpoint Urban Area Transportation Plan. It's arguably the most knowledgeable firm in the area in regards to that plan. And all I'll say at this point is we defer to the findings of the traffic engineers found in our application. And you heard from some tonight when speaking about East Mountain View and the lack of empirical evidence that would suggest that an additional turn lane would be warranted there. Next slide, please. So some closing comments here. To maintain the economic diversity of Sandpoint, our businesses must be able to attract and retain workers. Housing cost is the most significant threat to our area businesses. The homes in this project will be affordable. Funding and zoning raise questions about block length and double frontage lots. We feel that we've addressed these concerns by offering to dedicate a 10-foot easement and construct a paved pedestrian path between the bike path and Bluegrass Way. Sandpoint Code provides allowances for each of these. The project's the result of significant study, design and engineering. And to the best of our owner's ability, they have worked to present a development plan which closely mirrors the 2018 vision for the property put forth by the city while respecting the current zoning of residential, single family and related issues of private property rights. We're aware that you face a number of competing and sometimes contradictory aspirations in the, in the form of long range plans that speak to the vision and then more detailed, specific standards called out in your ordinances. We believe that University Park as presented exceeds those standards and specifically those of Title 10, as well as the urban area transportation plan. Next slide, please. First thing I want to just put into the record is addressing the issue of block length. First and foremost, this became aware to us just hours before the planning commission hearing is then the double frontage issue or proposed issue. Block lengths, I want to point out in a bit contrast to the staff report. The code does not stipulate that a variance is required or that justification be provided. It's not a deviation because the code contemplates and discusses blocks over 800 feet. And you'll see that highlighted on the bottom there from 1016, which comes out of the specific requirements for subdivision sign, design, says block lengths over 800 feet in length may be required to have one crosswalk, not less than 10 feet in width situated near the center of the block. So the fact that the code contemplates blocks over 800 feet, it certainly authorizes them then. So personally, professionally, I don't believe the application needs a variance or any justification for that. And we've addressed that by trying to put a, offering a 10-foot dedicated pathway from Bluegrass over to the bike path. Next slide, please. Addressing street arrangement and interconnection, this is in the development agreement D2, page 19 from the staff report. You know, there's a conflict with the urban area transportation plan here. And if you do need justification for this street arrangement, interconnection, it's really that your urban area transportation plan calls for minimization of intersections along arterials. Councilman Grok could probably appreciate this if he's driving down Boyer and every 100 or 200 feet or 300 feet, there's a, you know, a new access point. It's what's it going to do to the health and the traffic flow of that arterial? So again, we, we think that the urban area transportation plan actually directs us to design just the way we have. Next slide, please. And the question of the elusive double frontage lot. This is a dictionary that Aaron has a copy of up in his office that I left him when I left the city. And it has a variety of definitions of what is a double frontage lot. This is one that they use. An interior lot having frontage on two parallel or approximately parallel streets. For the purpose of this definition, a lot which has been denied access to one of the parallel or approximate parallel streets shall not be deemed a double frontage lot. You think about that. We're not suggesting that any traffic or any entrance or any cars move from Boyer into these supposed double frontage lots or Mountain View into these lots. All of that access to these lots is from the interior streets. So from our perspective, these are not double frontage lots. And it's really a subjective determination. If you're going to call them that, sure, we could, we could discuss all day what it is. But I believe that these are not designed, next slide, please, as double frontage lots. And to go just a little bit further, when you look at Sandpoint's own code 1016, talks about double frontage lots in section seven here, created by either public or private streets, but not by driveways or alleys. Shall not be prohibited, except where a more integrated street plan or other conditions make it undesirable to meet this prohibition. So what is double frontage lot? Well, if it's separated with a class one multimodal trail, and that sounds fancy, but it's basically that big bike path between Boyer and this property that runs all the way up. It's really not fronting Boyer. I mean, it's semantics and sure, we could talk back and forth and debate, but those lots front a class one federally funded, multi-purposeers bike trail, bike path. And they're not double French lot. And that bike path and trail, as was shown earlier, wraps all the way around and goes all the way down East Mountain View. So we don't believe our lots are designed as double frontage lots. And they only have single frontages and single approaches, which is internally. Next slide, please. And I won't belabor this point much more. I just wanted to give you an illustration here. Come on computer. There we go. All right. So just on the left there, I'm just illustrating where that, that bike path is up and around and showing you that all those lots on the, on the west side, they're, they're really not double French because they run into a bike, a class one federally funded bike facility. And then to the right, you probably can't see, but this is, this is just like two seconds of looking at our aerials in town. And you know, here's an example of five places in town where we have double frontage lots. It's really not an issue to be debated or discussed or put in barriers or exactions. It happens all over in town. It's subjective. And I guess I'd say your code authorizes it and allows it. And we have lots of it around and I haven't heard of anyone dying from a double frontage lot. Next slide, please. This next slide is just a bit lengthy. It's one of my last two, so you're almost there. Thank you for your time. I'm bringing this up because this, this deals directly with another exhibit. I want to enter into the record, whoever would like it, which is a draft development agreement that City Administrator Jeff Anderson Stapleton sent me on October 30th. And it may or may not include provisions that you are party to or aware of. But I bring this up because these negotiations, you know, the fence, line side, never discussed the fence. Certainly never discussed the wall. So we have very limited, if you can put yourself in our shoes, we have very limited opportunity as a real power differential here. And this is the only time when we can speak to the actual decision makers, our elected officials and say, you know, some of this stuff is, is really going too far and we don't feel it's part of any legal authority that the city has in their code. So I'm bringing these up just because I'm hoping you can maybe influence whatever negotiations either occur tonight or this closes tonight and we are sent to negotiate with your team, that you can impart some vision on those negotiations. So the draft development agreement is problematic due to a number of unclear statements and conditions. We ask council to provide clear direction to staff regarding the following. The first is section three, construction schedule. The timing of the expiration of preliminary plat is problematic is currently written in the draft development agreement. It's two years. And what they've reverted back to is to city code. And although that code says, says that you can get a one-year extension, there's no guarantee we could get extension. So what that means is we would have to build this whole thing or the preliminary plat will expire in two years, which is totally crazy. Due to the uncertainty of market conditions and absorption rates, we believe that a longer approval period is justified and asks preliminary plat to be approved through 2025. Condition 12D also references this limited time period. And our ask to you is please instruct staff to negotiate the development agreement with a 2025 preliminary plat expiration date. The next item is condition 12D. This requirement is to install a right turn lane on North Boyer Avenue at the project driveway of Ebbett Way, no later than the timeframe provided by city code 1017, which is two years. This is coming right from the development draft agreement. We are not agreeable to this for two reasons. First, the timing is exceptionally short based on the scale of the project. Second, the right turn lane exaction is being driven by the traffic impact analysis that I mentioned before. That model included assumptions of future high-traffic commercial and multifamily development occurring in phase four. The developer has no control over the guarantee that such development is even possible. It would require that the land to be rezoned, which is a discretionary action of the council. And if it was rezoned, this phase of the development is, I'm sorry, this phase of the proposed development is currently zoned residential, single family, which the proposed development is currently zoned residential single-family, which generates far fewer vehicle trips than the aspirational commercial and multifamily scenario that the transportation model ran. So as such, that right turn lane may not even be warranted under a non-commercial future state of that, that Phase 4. So we request that the council instruct staff to negotiate further flexibility on this exaction, so that it's deferred, and only that right turn lane is stipulated upon development approval for uses that would generate the vehicle trips equivalent to or greater than the transportation model that we ran, which was based on high-intensity commercial and multifamily development. If this remains a single, large, single-family residential lot or four lots, it's likely no turn lanes would be justified by the traffic volumes. Finally, no, two more. Condition 12E2 and F2, developers shall construct a 6-foot masonry wall along the entire Boyer and East Mountain View Drive. Well, we haven't negotiated much of that, other than saying we don't like it. We object to any requirement related to the material and design of this fence. Specifically, code does authorize you to require fencing. There's nothing in Title 10 that says anything about walls. There's nothing in Title 10 that says anything about standards for articulation or materials, and unfortunately, the law says that if it's not in your code, you can't just pull it out of thin air and say, oh, build a silver fence, or build a gold fence, or a platinum fence, or, you know, whatever kind of fence you, you, you think a citizens committee is going to tell us? I mean, that, that just is, sends shivers up my back that, you know, after six months waiting for this, we're going to have to go through a process with a citizen committee to approve a wall? So the, my clients have agreed to build a non-vinyl fence. That was the issue. Vinyl fences, when the snow piles go by in Boyer, they shoot rocks and they blow holes through those vinyl fences, looks like crap. So it's in my, my client's interest to build a high-quality fence, a very nice-looking fence that's going to enhance property values on the site, and he's willing to do so, but we do not believe this should be dictated. So we encourage you and request that the council instruct staff to negotiate the removal of this condition as it relates to material or design of the fence. Finally, Condition 12E3, the developer shall be responsible for snow removal on the shared pathway. This is on East Mountain View. So this is a city-owned shared pathway similar to all others in the city, and as far as we know, no other developer or private property owner is required to clear snow from a city trail. We request the council instruct staff to negotiate the removal of this condition as it relates to requiring the developer to remove snow from this public pathway along East Mountain View. Next slide, please. And I'm going to have quickly Tim McDonald and maybe Derek McGrew, who was the other co-owner of this property, speak in a second, as well as Katie Cox, but Tim's going to speak to this point, and this is 10-1-3. In the development agreement, it strictly prohibits, and I do give staff credit, they have tried to find a way to help allow the issuance of some building permits while the infrastructure's going in, but this is really important because in the past, you know, we'll call it Jeremy time here at the city, we used to allow the bonding and, for improvements, and with that bonding, you could get final plat. And once you have final plat, you can actually have a lot that you can build and sell a house on. In code right now, 10-1-3 speaks specifically to the allowance and authority the city has to allow developers to bond for improvements, and it even says that you can bond for them for three years. So you put up the money for the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the sidewalks and whatnot, then you go build them, and upon each, each portion of that street or section of that phase being accepted, you can get a building permit. And, and that's really what we're looking for here, is some flexibility, and Tim will speak to this. So the concern of issuing building permits before final plat is sincere, and code does provide a mechanism for staff to negotiate this. In closing, I'd certainly entertain any questions that you have from me, but I don't know if you want that first. I think I'd love to have Tim just get up and say a couple words real briefly to you.
Hello, my name is Tim McDonald. I live here in Sandpoint. I was born and raised in Sandpoint, and my family goes back several generations here. I started my first subdivision in Sandpoint 25 years ago. Over the years, we have subdivided and built out many developments in the city and then built the homes in those neighborhoods. Living in Sandpoint and seeing the never-ending need for affordable housing here, our business model has always been to build affordable, single-family housing in Sandpoint, and we've been doing that for the last 25 years. Being in development and home construction in town, you can imagine how excited we are for the opportunity to develop this special piece of property. Having built and operated the driving range on the property for a few years ago, I've spent a considerable amount of time there. It really gave me an appreciation for all it can offer our community. The ability for us to be able to design and build a subdivision that can help fill the affordable housing gap while having the opportunity to dedicate so much of its natural beauty to conservancy and protect such a large stretch of Sand Creek is really exciting to us. This property could easily have been purchased by someone else, and they could have platted waterfront lots right down to Sand Creek, or made a private park in there and closed it off to the public. So we're super happy to be working with Connect Sioux Land Trust to preserve and keep so much of this property open to the public. In addition to the concerns Jeremy raised earlier, I want to quickly address one more important issue. We would like to request the ability to receive building permits on the property once we have bonded for infrastructure. Due to a short building season at Sandpoint, the city has always allowed developers to bond for final plat on phases of the development along, allowing for lot sales and construction permits. This is very important because our window for paving here is only about six or seven months per year. By being allowed to bond for final plat, a development is not hit with long unnecessary delays. Our company is locally owned and operated, we purchase our materials locally, and we use local subcontractors in all of our building. During the course of construction of a home, we employ over 100 local workers. Without the ability to bond for final plat and receive building permits, we will not be able to provide employment until possibly next June when we can pave. If allowed to bond for final plat, we would be able to get our people working right away. We're happy to stipulate no sales until all infrastructure is complete and only receive building permits, and that's all I've got, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for, for Tim or for Jeremy?
Your Honorable Mayor, Derek McGrew is the other owner, and I think it's just helpful for everyone to get to face this. And then Katie Cox from council.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you guys tonight, and I want to thank the city staff as well for the ongoing discussions we've had. Jeremy, thanks for all your guidance and your experience here at the city. I want, in addition to Tim's comments, you guys to be aware of our, our local team, our very much local team. I myself reside in the greater Sandpoint area and have for just over 11 years. My parents have been here for 15 years. So really important to understand that outside developers could have procured this property, done a variety of things that were not in the best interest of the community. I spent time skiing at Schweitzer, talking to people about the Nordic Trails, the interconnectivity of access to Sand Creek over the Popsicle Bridge, down into City Beach, and this piece of property is, got a ton of history, it's really important to the community, and we wanted to preserve that. And I wanted you to hear that from the applicant. It's, it's important. And while Tim is the resident expert from the standpoint of building homes that has done that repeatedly in this community, I had a master vision for, which was probably pretty aggressive, frankly, never seen a pandemic in, in our future, most of us haven't. Those commercial activities are likely never going to happen. I shouldn't say never, because just probably the end of last year, we were talking about this almost being uncertainty. And I say that to give you some context about, we entered into these discussions driven by a traffic study that really encompassed a pretty, pretty high impact, and we did that to be forthright. We did that because we also agreed from the city staff standpoint, planning, we wanted to be transparent about what our intentions were. Do we necessarily have to do that? I don't really know, hindsight's always 20/20, but as it relates to the right-hand turn lane and some of the other improvements, I think it just, you guys need to be reminded that the impacts that are studied here that are triggering some of the improvements will likely never have happened, and what we would ask is just that there be some consideration as we move into discussions, further discussions with the city, that if those things don't happen, it does not trigger those improvements. So I just, I want to make sure that that's clear. And as it relates to, I think Jeremy did a great job talking about the main, the long block, block length, the double frontage lots. I came out of the planning and zoning hearing, hearing from the community about aesthetics, and then it was essentially a process where I think planning and zoning frankly got confused about what we were talking about, and long story short, the aesthetics of that corridor in Boyer and the transportation master plan, they, they don't necessarily align in that. We're concerned with designing things, I think Ryan Lutman on our team, another local, I think was a part of the city team as well. He, he's a man of total integrity. He, he has engineering standards and numbers, but he wants function, he wants functionality. He's designed some alternatives that I think was, were presented related to face a curve, face a curve, and that multi, multiple utility path and be parking along Mountain View, and that was coming from an engineer's brain, but a member of the community and someone that uses these areas, and those design proposals were put in place to try to accommodate, I think, the comments that came out of the planning and zoning, which were, let's just not do everything based off of engineering, we certainly got to be cognizant to what the standards are, but let's have some sort of look and feel associated with it. And Jerry brought up the wall, which kind of came out of total left field, frankly, because it seemed as if the community was very much opposed to this, this corridor. So I wanted to provide some comments as the applicant, reminding you all that we're a local team, we care about the community, we live here ourselves, and the partnership with Connect Sioux Land Trust should really be the thing that I think proves that to you. So I appreciate the opportunity to just at least convey those thoughts. If you have questions for us, we are here as long as you want us to be.
Thank you, Mr. McGrew, appreciate that.
Thanks, Senator Mayor, or, sorry, Honorable Mayor, Katie Cox from Connect Sioux Land Trust, and then I think hopefully, when she's done, we can just fire her.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, for having us here. On behalf of the board and staff of Connect Sioux Land Trust, I would like to express our support for the preliminary plat and subdivision request for University Park. This is such an exciting opportunity for our community, and KLT looks forward to working closely with the developers regarding future determinations for conservation and public access and use. The owners of the property have clearly expressed their plans to grant a portion of this land to KLT for conservation benefit and public use through the exercise of the letter of intent, which you can find in your packets. As you can, as you can imagine, we were thrilled when we received this call. We fully understand that this parcel, as Tim had already mentioned, could have been purchased by a developer who was focused more on the bottom line and not interested in gifting 16 acres towards conservation and public access. This is a significant gift to our community and to the neighborhood, and I hope you can see that tonight. This dedication will serve the community by providing public access and open space that is of historical significance to our community while simultaneously ensuring protection of the ecologically important riparian areas along Sand Creek. The 75-acre University Park property has long been on KLT's radar, as well as serving the community's needs related to agricultural research, learning, and recreation. The site also served as the location of KLT's first BioBlitz in 2016 and for the first two seasons of Camp Connect Sioux in 2017 and 2018. Spending time on the property now, as you are likely aware, the former University of Idaho parcel on Boyer harbors both historically and ecologically significant features that make it unique within our community. The riparian corridor along Sand Creek provides important urban habitat for a variety of wildlife. Large mammals use the creek as a migration route, and the area abounds with birds. Seasonal variation in water levels make this a dynamic, active place. In 2016, at KLT's BioBlitz, we identified a number of rare plants here that are found only at a few locations across the entire state. The parcel includes nearly half a mile of frontage on Sand Creek, all of which is currently proposed as open space. Maintaining this vegetative buffer will prevent sedimentation and contamination of the stream during the development stage of the adjacent upland areas. The proposed open space areas include the diverse riparian corridor along Sand Creek, as well as an experimental mixed hardwood plantation that was established in the 1980s. Continued access to these areas will provide opportunities for education in addition to close-to-home recreation for city residents. A regional public access trail network has been developed adjacent to and near the property. The property's central location presents an, an opportunity to further extend and enhance this network, which includes the Popsicle Bridge, Sand Creek Bike Path, Dover Bike Path, City Beach, and downtown Sandpoint. Working to ensure continued access to the University Park parcel has long been a strategic objective of Connect Sioux Land Trust, and we are thrilled by the opportunity to partner with the current owners to achieve this goal. I know that there were some discussions at planning and zoning about wanting to see more concrete plans in regards to the open space and trail. As I hope you can understand, and as Jeremy articulated tonight, KLT really needs to move beyond this plat process before we, as a nonprofit, can invest our resources and the time and energy of our volunteers and the community in, in planning this. Based on the, based on the out, the layout that has been shared with us and the work currently underway in partnership with our organization, we fully support this development proposal and look forward to engaging with our community in the planning process. Thank you, and I can answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox, appreciate that. All right, council, any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, a couple things. My second one, we'll be discussing the conditions, what, what time would be best for that, staff?
The applicant will have a chance for rebuttal, so that would be the last opportunity you have to engage the applicant specifically regarding any modification.
I was thinking more so for us, like, if we were to approve or deny his, their request for the conditions.
So Fonda, now might be a good opportunity.
I don't know if that was very clear.
Yeah, can I pose a question? So it's rare, actually, that the council has the opportunity to approve a preliminary plat. So maybe if you could kind of walk us through the process, so right now, we're, again, we're approving or denying.
You have not closed your public hearing, and you have not finished your public comment.
No. Okay, but just hear out my question.
Okay.
So how does a development agreement that is negotiated by staff, does the council have an opportunity to, will that development agreement be coming back to staff at a later date? Or is that back to council at a later date? Or is that negotiated by staff with the, with the applicant?
The development agreement is submitted to you tonight because it incorporates the conditions that would have previously been recommended. The conditions have been built into the development agreement and submitted to you as a request for, if you're going to approve, you have the opportunity to approve the preliminary plat with the development agreement as drafted. You will notice there's a provision built into the development agreement that gives the city staff the ability to negotiate some of the terms and conditions or amend the development agreement on items that are deemed insubstantial. If there's substantial items, the development agreement can be amended at a later date and brought back to you for approval on those substantial conditions.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does, thank you. Go ahead, Joel.
So, to be clear, we're not going to discuss right now the, I heard Mr. Graham, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Graham, you guys are asking for us to change some of the conditions, correct?
Yeah, and specifically, Councilman, although what Fonda described sounds good, there's no mechanism, put yourself in our shoes again, so once it leaves this body, we are now interfacing with city staff, and there's no mechanism for us to really object, accept legal challenges, which we, of course, don't want to do, to those conditions. So really, it's by, by making those sorts of, if you are supportive of what I suggested there, it kind of gives staff direction that when we say, no, we don't want the, the one. Are supportive of what I suggested there, it kind of gives staff direction that when we say, no, we don't want the, the wall, which could cost a half million dollars. That they don't push back and say, well, too bad. If it's not in there, we're not taking it back to council. So for us, it's a real power imbalance. And what we're asking is that you direct staff, if you feel any of those requests that we've made are appropriate or. I'd love to give you more information if you want to understand them more, but we would like staff to have some direction. So that we know that it's not just us pushing against, you know, an empty voice.
Right. So I would like to respond, if I may, just from a legal perspective, you have no obligation to negotiate with the applicant here tonight. What your other option would be legally and from a procedural aspect is you can make a motion to approve. If, if your intent is to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat and that's where this lands. And you don't wish to adopt the development agreement as drafted, you can give instruction to city staff on particular items of the development agreement. And request that it come back to you with amendments at the next public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Graham, I just want to say I appreciate your presentation. It was very thorough and very clear. Uh, when you say affordable housing, I guess, what do you like? To, to me, like the market now is not affordable, right? For people that live in Sandpoint, I'm, I see it every day. I guess what I have a hard time with is when I see developers come up here and they use that word, I feel like to make us feel better to approve something. And I don't feel that any developer has to sell affordable housing. That's their property. They can sell it for as much as they want. So I guess, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, please. Thank you.
So 25 years of affordable housing.
Yeah.
This last year, you sound like you're pretty aware of where the market is. So this last year, we finished our last five homes in a subdivision. That we did here in town as the median home price was about. Three seventy-three, I think, our houses we were selling for, our highest price was three thirty. We averaged out about three fifteen to three twenty. So we're consistently between thirty and fifty thousand over my career below what other house, what the median is. Yeah, I, I could have brought all the statistics.
Right. No, 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 it's completely.
A lot of houses and the high price.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I, I guess where I'm coming from is more of that word is, I don't want to say triggering, but I, you know, I don't.
Find more affordable than what we can do.
Right.
Well, we're always the most affordable guys in town.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and uh, Councilman. The other thing I wanted to point out, in your packet somewhere, there should be a letter from Chris Bassett from Bonner Community Housing Association. Who's very supportive of this project and we've had just preliminary discussions if this goes through. Uh, how can we uh decouple the land from the house or put some sort of permanent um restrictions on there that ensure that? Because the problem isn't when Tim sells it. It's two months later when someone says, oh, I can sell this for this. So uh, I just want to let you know that there is a ongoing discussion about how Derek and Tim can potentially work with. Bonner Community Housing to put some, build what's called a community land trust to really ensure that our teachers, our firemen, our, our employees can, can afford these homes in perpetuity.
Thank you, Jeremy.
There must be other questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
It, it's more of a, a statement and a thank you. So I want to, so this is a legacy piece of property. That's critically important to all of us and I want to thank all the parties that are involved with this decision and what got us here. I know that it's taken a long time. However, I. Appreciate and respect the amount of time and care that it did take to get here. So. The robust citizen participation in this, I deeply appreciate that. The decision and the recommendation, uh, as strong as it was from our planning and zoning commission, uh, it, it has been heard. Our city staff, you guys have count countless hours and I, I know how important this is to all of us and I just want to express. My thanks and gratitude to you to work very diligently to bring this in front of us and. I was, I was happy to have like an A option, a B option, and then a hybrid C option. And I think the city, you guys have done a fantastic job.
Any questions, council?
I just had one for Jeremy. Um, would you uh agree to what our legal counsel had mentioned about the uh? You know, not approving the uh, the development agreement at this time? Would, would that suffice?
I, I think that would be very uh much supported by my clients. Uh, the only thing I'd add to that is. Again, if any of those conditions resonate with you, we feel that those are all very reasonable. Um, and maybe Aaron can throw them back up if you didn't catch them, but, or you can incorporate them into your motion. But we just feel that those are the issues that we feel are really um either onerous or showstoppers or super challenging for us to swallow.
Jeremy, did you bring those conditions in print by any chance?
I know they're.
They're only in the electronic PowerPoint?
Yep.
Okay, but, but to put them in the record, we need a printed version. But if they're not in print, we'll have.
I can read them back into the.
No, we'll pull them off of the PowerPoint.
So Fonda, um, with the um allowing the bonding on the building permits, does that allow them to, or Jeremy, does that allow you to proceed? Uh, even that, that uh, that agreement is not in place? Or do we need to, would we need to address that prior to?
I would not advise the city to issue building permits previous to final plat.
Councilman darling, um, I, I, to answer your question, um, the, the real opportunity, you know, you're going to have another meeting in two weeks. That's pretty small, you know, pennies in the overall scale of this, but what we're really talking about uh is, so there's infrastructure. Um, the, the curbs, the, the roads, the sidewalks, um, everything that's going into the water sewer into the subdivision. And uh, Tim wants to just get everyone working as quickly as possible to earning income and making money and keeping their families alive. And if we can bond for the sidewalks, the roads, the water lines, the sewer lines. And as that work is proceeding, get building permits, then we can final plat. Either the phases as I proposed or even subphases, but what it really allows is Tim's crew of framers and foundation people and sheet rockers and trim carpenters. All to be working throughout the winter and, and that's a big deal. That's like. Millions of dollars of wages uh that could be flown into our community. Homes being furnished, spec homes being set up, uh, lots of things. So. Yeah, we would love to find a way. I know the city's had some bad experiences in the past and for some reason have withdrawn the ability for anyone to do that. I don't know what those issues were, but we'd love to talk about a way to get through them.
Can you be more specific?
I can. So I think one of the probably confusions is that there isn't a legally described parcel. To issue a building permit on until the final plat is approved and those parcels are created. That's the issue. You want to debate this?
No, I agree 100%. What we're proposing is that the plat be approved, the final plat be approved and the infrastructure. Included in that final plat be bonded for. So we're saying, let's move right to final plat ASAP once any final engineering designs need to be changed. And bond for all those streets, all those water lines, all those sidewalks. And get going because then we will have a final plat. We can start issuing building permits and we said we won't sell or offer to sell those lots. Until each phase of that infrastructure is installed and our, our bonding would be removed for that phase. That's the way it used to work.
Fonda, do you have a response to that? I, I'm not familiar with the history here. I don't know what changed and when and why. Is, is, can anyone answer that question for me?
I, I don't know that that's going to be relevant. I'm sure one of the city staff can answer it, but what I can say is that. What Jeremy's speaking to um has, is reflected, the negotiation of that is reflected as what. The city was willing to do to accommodate this request to allow for the sub phasing final plat. So if you. Read in the development agreement, the section that talks about the ability to final plat a sub or a very small portion of one of those phases. That was to accommodate this concern so that they could put in infrastructure, for instance, those five lots, those five northern lots that border Mountain View, if that's their concern. They could subphase those five lots, get the infrastructure put in, submit to you for final plat on those five lots. Then they would have legally described parcels and they could proceed with the application for building permits on those five lots. The, the development agreement doesn't preclude them from subphasing a variety of times through the process, but it. Allows the city to make sure and to verify and to have inspected all of that infrastructure in its actual location. Previous to final plat.
And I agree with um Fonda completely. The challenge with that and the staff has been workable on that. They did say, oh, you can subface. If you're a business owner, put yourself in our shoes. Um, so you want to do a subface. Tim's not going to stand up here and Derek's not going to stand up here and present this. It all costs money, costs time, surveyors, planners, engineers. What we're saying is you've got the mo- money for the bonding, uh, you've got the inspection money, you've got the warranty money. If the bonding could be put forward, uh, we could just do a final plat and then truck along and there's no need, I mean. Frankly, it took six months to get to the preliminary plat. I don't know how long a subphase of a final plat takes. We might be July next year before a subphase could be done. So a final plat could be accommodated in any way, shape or form. We feel that with the bonding and the thorough inspection concurrent with the lots along. Whatever road or phase is being completed, that, that we have all the mechanisms there and the city has protection to call in a bond if. Something happens to Tim or Derek, you can have someone go build it, uh, because it's 150% of the estimated cost to build this stuff that you'll have a bond for.
So, so Jeremy, the disagreement that, that you're, the concern that you have with the sub phasing is, is just that it, it would drive the process too long for you and bring in.
Says time, um, money, absolutely. And um, to some degree, it's just, here's the certainty, okay. Go start knocking out houses or, you know, foundations or whatever it may be. So. I'm not expecting you to wave the magic wand and dictate to staff that they do it. I'm just asking that you. Then your, your perspective on that to them. So as we go to negotiate that and those other issues I raised could be. Sort of emphasized from the council perspective rather than the applicant perspective.
Do you have something more?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So what is the risk, Fonda? I'm hearing, I'm hearing a no, from a protecting the city standpoint, what's the risk of?
I will not advise the city to issue building permits previous to the final plat.
And again, we're saying, let's, let's let us bond for a final plat and get the final plat done in like six weeks or something.
Too big of a risk on this large of a project.
So, Mr. Mayor. It seemed, it, it would appear that there was an old way of doing things that had kind of muddied some stuff up and has made. Some challenges and maybe even some pretty significant errors. And in my observation with being up here for a year now is that we've got city staff that has done a very good job of. Untieing some of those knots and clearing up some of these different uh developments or issues that we're moving forward with. I, I strongly listen to legal with the direction that we're going with this and it sounds like. And through the agreement that there is enough lenience in there that there is still communication and negotiation for both parties. An old way of doing it, muddying things up. I think that our staff has done a good job of. Maybe not necessarily streamlining things because it might not be quicker, but it's better. There's a better way. We're doing things in a better way now.
And Mr. Mayor, just once I thought you do still have your public hearing still.
Jeremy, what would you expect the, the timing to be on that sub phasing? Uh, what would be efficient in your eyes or in the developer's eyes?
The real challenge is, uh, Tim spoke to is the paving. Uh, you have to have certain temperatures to. And as things stand right now, the development agreement is saying that we have to be fully. Fully complete with our infrastructure before any portion of the final plat will be accepted. And then we can issue building permits. Be clear, what we're saying is. Final plat will put up one and a half times the money to build everything that's contemplated. And as we can build it with the weather, temperatures concurrently, we can pull building permits. If something horrible happened, um, and we didn't perform, you have that bond to go build the street. You issue a bid, boom, it's built, it's constructed. But in terms of your, your specific answer, um, you know, if this got approved tonight as it stood in the development agreement, we probably couldn't get a final plat before you for. Months, uh, because simply because of the temperatures. Which means no one working for the next eight months, seven months.
You can understand the council's, when our legal strongly, you know, she doesn't accept this. You know, we will, I think that we could make considerations on timing, you know, like a, a minimum amount of time to be able to do that possibly through staff. We could ask them to see. Maybe a, a reduction in fees or process to help accommodate that because I think it is important getting it done. And getting the, the timeframes put in place with our season. So I guess I'm leaning on staff and legal as to how, how can we come together on that to, to. Help get to the same, same thing. That's what everybody wants.
And Councilman darling, I really appreciate your emphasis there and I'd simply just leave it at, it's, it's allowed by your code. It's in your code and. I've seen more subdivisions in the time I was here, um, than you guys have seen since. Um, and I'm not aware of a whole lot of major issues that, that have happened. I know there could be some hiccups and some challenges, but. Kind of goes with the territory.
I, I have a liability bent, you know, that's where I come from. My job's to protect the city from liability. I mean, I'll give you just one glaring example. What happens if you have a house under construction that goes up in fire and you don't have a fire hydrant in?
It burns.
But what if you have people in there? I mean, you have a liability issue.
Yeah, we're not talking about occupancy, to be clear.
Counselor Sherman, or Rule, do you have any questions for the applicant or for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yes.
I just want to say I appreciate, you know, the thoroughness of tonight's presentation and all of the. Um, materials that um have been shared with us tonight. So I don't have any specific questions. Um, I appreciate the conversation and I, I would like to say that um, I respect our, our legal's opinion on this.
Okay, with that, um, we will now open the public hearing. Thank you, uh, all of the applicants for, for that presentation. It was very thorough and very detailed. Thank you. Uh, we'll now open the public hearing to take verbal testimony um from the public. So. Is anyone here in person that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, please come forward.
Adrian Cox, I am uh resident of City of Sandpoint. I am uh very much generally in favor of the, the project and the approval. Let's see, uh, I am a resident here in town. I uh also an employer here, have 50. Employees that greatly are impacted by the local housing market. And also uh have, am a neighbor to the project. We have a couple of parcels right across the street, just across uh Boyer. Uh, on Ebbet Way uh across from the project. So, so connected to, in, in a few different ways and have a little bit of um. Developer experience too, just a, a moderate amount of, of perspective there. I just had some general comments um that I, I think primarily that this project. From an outsider's perspective and just seeing as a resident and as a, somebody with a development experience, seems like an outstanding project. For citizens, outstanding project for the community. To me, um, uh, from my developer side, I think this is an extremely generous development that has a lot going for. The, the citizens and is really, they've done a great job of keeping in mind uh what people here really want and whatnot. I think it's important to keep a perspective that another developer could come along and do much less to the community's benefit and really just try and maximize profit here. So I think that the, the proposed project is rather exceptional that way. It's also worth noting, I don't have any kind of affiliation or connection to the developer, to the project in, in any way. I'm just totally independent and here just expressing my own, own opinions. Uh, I can be biased, you know, having a uh development experience or whatever, but I'm also speaking very much as a local resident um and, and business owner. Speaking on the, the five points that Jeremy had that were kind of in contention, I have a bit of an opinion on all of those. One of them is to bond and I have only a tiny bit of experience on that, but bonds are expensive and. They're not going to do that unless they really need to or they really benefit from it. And a bond is buying like 150% of the insured price of that. Street paving or whatever. It seems to me that it, it's very, very uh reasonable to allow for bonding. It seems to me that it's very, very reasonable to allow for bonding for a few different types of items. You could keep it to just the streets or certain utilities or whatever. And certainly the developer's not going to want to close on the lot sale and have the house be sold and even nowhere near occupied before they get those, those in. They're, they're going to want to have the living in before they can really sell the lot. It, it's very reasonable in my mind to, to, to allow for some sort of bonding, just as an outsider looking in, a little bit of experience there. And also their request to go to have it move from a two-year to five-year plat time as a developer that even thought six-year worth of plat in the county or PUD was a little short, their five-year request seems super reasonable. It would be scary as a developer to only have two years. The turn lane would actually benefit my property right across the street if they were forced to put in that wider turn lane. We would love that, that would really help us out. But that seems unfair to demand that they put that in without them having the, the need there approved by their commercial development there or whatever. I thought that their request on that seemed very reasonable to me too. Also, the, the wall seems reasonable. Well, it would be lovely. I would love the idea of the, the concrete wall. These are supposed to be affordable lots that would impact affordability and it does seem a little bit unreasonable to request such a fancy wall just because the city would like it, would be great, but seems like some flexibility there makes sense too. And lastly, oh yeah, that is on the bonding. That was all. I think, I think we're lucky to have this kind of project. I appreciate your guys' time and I really recommend the project, especially with Jeremy's considerations. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I appreciate those comments. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask anyone who's participating by Zoom if you are interested in speaking in favor of this, approval of this request, to raise your hand, please. I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone registered to speak who has taken a neutral position?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone-
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We do have someone raising their hand at this point. Misty Kinney?
I'll mute.
I've allowed her to talk. Misty, you'll need to unmute yourself in order to speak.
Okay, we still can't hear you, Ms. Kinney. I think we're going to move on. Is there anyone else in the neutral?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Category, okay. Is there anyone registered to speak who is opposed to the project?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Not sure it's necessary, but I will provide the applicant with an opportunity for rebuttal. As a reminder, please note if new facts are presented, the public must be given an opportunity to comment on those new facts.
Thank you, honorable mayor. I don't know if this is helpful. Let's get some notes.
Thank you.
Now, just in closing, thanks for your time and consideration. We really would echo what you've heard, the fact that there's not one person opposed to what might be one of the larger subdivisions in Sandpoint's recent history, I think speaks volumes. We just asked for that council consideration of those points so that we can negotiate at an equal and fair playing level with, with the city staff as we work through the development agreement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and council will deliberate. At this time, questions may only be asked of staff. Proposed motions have been provided in the staff report. So, counsel.
I'd like to start.
Yeah.
Well, I'm very excited about the project and all the staff and developers that put their time in. This is absolutely beautiful and it's exactly what Sandpoint needs. So I'm excited to be a part of it and hopefully we get something put together tonight. I think the, the bonding is major. Personally had to bond projects to be able to get either through that season, that construction season, or not only are we dealing with construction ceiling seasons, as we're dealing with contractors. You know, there's only a few different paving outfits around here. So, you know, one developer may be, you know, up against multiple projects trying to get their work done. So we have a concentrated time, we have limited resources to get these projects done and bonding is absolutely relevant and important, especially when you're doing that. And I can understand Fonda's opinion on that, but working on it firsthand and bonding projects and pathways, personally, I see the, the resource being foolproof personally. As far as the snow removal on the pathway of East Mountain Dew, I did a pathway in Sandpoint and the city maintains that in right-of-way area. So I don't see any reason that they wouldn't do the snow removal for that. You know, you had the removal of fence standards. You know, as a personal property owner, you know, and doing a little bit of developing, I don't believe that the city has that and they have the avenue to dictate the specific standards. I think that's great and we can, you know, throw, throw a high finish out there and see where it lands, but in the end, we're talking about affordable housing and, you know, you throw a number of $500,000 out, well, that absolutely just goes against the bottom lines of these, these specific projects and the affordability of it. So I'm 100% in favor of allowing them to create that standard specifically.
Can I, to determine their own material and design standards, but still requiring a fence, is that reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Flexibility on the right turn lane, especially if I understood that correctly, the, the southern portion of that is going to re, they have to reapply for that development agreement. Is that correct, Aaron?
Is zone change.
Is-
It would be, the southern portion, we realize that would be a zone change as well as another subdivision application.
So the right-hand turn lane is based upon all of that information that's irrelevant at this point?
It's based on the traffic impact study, which, you know, specifically as proposed was a lot of self-storage, which is not a huge traffic generator, as well as a 10,000 square foot convenience store.
Okay. Proposed, but it's not-
That was included as in the traffic study for the uses. And you have to, you have to base the trip generations and distribution off of the uses proposed.
Which was, which was all commercial, correct?
Commercial and residential.
So speculating that that growth isn't going to occur.
For more details, Preston, if he's still on, can speak directly to the analysis behind the traffic impact analysis. Preston, are you with us?
I am, yes. So the, the trip generation proposed in there, in the traffic study that we reviewed, included single-family dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, mini warehouse that included 45,000 square feet of mini warehouse and commercial, about 10,000 square feet of commercial.
Okay. That kind of answers that question for me personally. And then the last point of the requesting it be pushed out to 2025, I think that the size of this project should allow that for sure. So I'm, I would be supportive of, of taking into consideration each five of those points through our approval process if we do so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I have the same things in my notes, John. I want to echo those. I believe that section three was a longer approval to 2025. I think that's very reasonable. Condition 12D with the right-of-way, add some flexibility with the zone change and waiting for that, as well as the, the fence standards and snow removal. I think that we don't need to enforce that. So as directing staff, I think those are things we can work on with the applicant as a, with the bond. That one's, you know, playing devil's advocate, I understand staff and legal protecting the city in that. And that one, I would encourage staff to work with the applicants since where we can meet, where the city's protected and yet we can work with the applicant. But I've never personally dealt with that situation, so.
And, and to be clear, I think I heard both of you say that addition of the right turn lane at Ebbett Way would be a condition of any future zone change of increase in terms.
Correct, correct.
Seeing if those two-
I thought you were looking at me.
Councilman Rule.
I was going to ask Shannon if she wanted to go first, if she had anything she wanted to say.
Go ahead, Tim.
So I missed, the first thing I would say is that I would like to commend KLT for working with the developer to, in some shape or form, obtain some open space and park land and conserve that. But I would caution the rest of the council that although we have a letter of intent, we have no legal guarantee that this is going to happen. So historically, I've been burned in this way making council decisions. So I wanted to point that out to council that if it's not in writing, it's not in writing. Then some of my other concerns are the, specific to the block length. What we are talking about making a decision on tonight will be a legacy for the council, whether it turns out good or poorly. I have a fundamental problem with the subdivision turning its back on the city and having us discuss a fence. Maybe we should be discussing where the houses face and potential alleyways. I think you turn into an exclusive type of situation. One entrance off of Boyer, I don't think is sufficient there. Had some couple other comments here.
There's two entrances off of Boyer.
No, okay, you're correct. You're correct, there are two entrances off of Boyer. There does seem to be some conflict with the comp plan. I know that's not ordinance, so it is not weighted as heavily, but there was a lot of effort put into the comp plan that envisioned a lot of multifamily, especially on the north end of this property along Boyer. So I would like to make sure that that is something that is heard. And I'd like to say that I don't always agree with the area transportation plans because they are transportation plans designing specifically for cars and not necessarily people. Sandpoint is a walking time, or excuse me, a walking town. And I think we really need to take that into consideration. I don't believe that there will be a similar aesthetic at all using that pathway if you have, no matter what kind of fence you build or what kind of masonry or not masonry or wood, when you face the houses away from the street, you take the eyes off the street. You don't have a neighborhood type feeling. I think that you could slow traffic in this area and improve the general feel of the northern part of Sandpoint, creating something much better than what has been created here. So it is my opinion that for at least part of this development, it should go back to the drawing board. And I don't feel that a 10-foot wide pathway cutting in that block is sufficient because if it is not designed in the proper way, it will not be used because it will not be interpreted as a public throughway. It may be mistakenly interpreted as a drive or a private area only and not used effectively by the public. I believe that is the majority of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate that. Staff, I have a question. Is it possible, I mean, I heard the applicant say that they couldn't complete a dedication without a preliminary plat because there's no, I believe without a final plat because there's no property to sell or give away. Could it be made a condition of the final plat process that, that that dedication occur?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Sorry. Could it, could the dedication of the property to Knixu Land Trust be a condition of the final plat approval?
Legally, generally, not without just compensation for our existing codes, but you know, if that was a condition that the applicant may volunteer, certainly, we'd close the public hearing. So if you, arguably, I would defer to Fonda, if you reopen it and go through the whole process and you wanted to potentially, but-
It's a legal matter.
It's a legal matter because there's nothing in code that would require it. It would essentially be volunteered and, but you get into a little bit of a, kind of skirt potential-
Well, the issue is Knixu Land Trust isn't a party to this preliminary plat approval nor are they a party to the development agreement. You, you can't as a city bind Knixu Land Trust to anything outside of the parties that are participating here, which are the applicant. But I, I think I hear the applicant saying in absolute good faith and Knixu Land Trust is, of course, very excited about this. I, I don't think that we see there being an issue with them dedicating that as a conservation use.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I don't think anyone, apologies, anyone doubts the sincerity of it. It's just our obligation to point out to you that it's, there's nothing binding.
Right.
I understand. Yeah. I think it's also important to recognize that I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable, and I'm not saying the intent of the council is this, but like strong-arming the applicants. They have, they don't even have to donate anything if they don't want to. They're standing up there, you know, doing us, for whatever reasons, kindness. But I just want to be clear, like they have no obligation to donate anything and I don't feel that as a council that we should stronghold them, strong-arm them to do such a thing. They don't have to. You know, this approval of this isn't based on if they're going to donate that property or not, they don't have to. And I just want to be clear, I don't believe the intent of the council or Councilman Woman Rules intends for harmful. I just want to be clear for us to not strong-arm our-
And the preliminary plat does identify those newly created parcels as open space irrespective of whether they're dedicated to Knixu Land.
Correct. Okay.
Well, the traffic impact study site plan does. The plat shows them the single-family lots.
Okay. Any other deliberation?
I don't know if we've heard from Councilwoman Sherman.
Mr. Mayor.
That's a rule?
Yeah.
But Councilwoman Sherman is no longer a panelist and she was having some technical difficulty. She has called in as an attendee.
Okay.
And Shannon, I have allowed you to talk if you'd like to unmute yourself.
You're going to say, Councilman Rule?
Is Shannon going to speak?
We're expecting that. Why don't you go ahead, Councilman Rule?
I just wanted to add to my comments that I do appreciate trying to make, hopefully, what turns out to be affordable housing. I do realize we have a great need for it here in Sandpoint. It's just my feeling that we may be able to do a little bit better job than we're doing with this.
Councilor Sherman, are you there? Councilor Grode, is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if we could provide a little bit of clarity with regard to code and timing of improvements and acceptance, Fonda suggested reading a bit of our subdivision, Title 10 Code, 10-13 Improvements into the Record, if we may.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
So 10-13 Improvements is with regards to this bonding issue. And it says agreement approval. All required, the very first sentence, "All required public improvements must be installed prior to City Council approval of the final plat." Sentence one, "When applicable, a developer may be required to enter into an agreement, setting forth all commitments made by the developer. No such plat of a subdivision shall be approved unless all street, sidewalk, water and sewer improvements have been installed or the subdivider has entered into an agreement to install the improvements. Agreement shall be in a form acceptable to the city and include a provision that the improvements be installed no later than three years from the City Council approval of the final plat." Based on that subsection, based on that portion of 10-1-3 and the fact that it is the city's right to request a developer to enter into an agreement, it doesn't provide for a developer's right to request the alteration from the code, which requires in sentence one, "All required public improvements must be installed prior to City Council approval of the final plat."
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. Okay, Councilor Sherman, are you there? Working on calling her with the hard line there. Pre-COVID days.
Appreciate her tenacity.
Yeah, well, I'll say a few words. You know, I think that the suggestions by the applicant were very reasonable. I do agree that a project of this scale and size is quite an undertaking in a two-year timeframe or in a three-year timeframe. So I think that's, that's a very reasonable request. It also makes sense to me, as it does to my fellow counselors here, to defer that right turn lane until development occurs in that Phase Four. And I also, I also am of the feeling that allowing more flexibility with the fence does seem to make sense. I do like the idea of putting some kind of restriction on that. And I already heard that from the applicant, that they're happy to commit to no final fencing, no, you know, cheap fencing that, you know, won't hold up. But I think, you know, I think about look and feel and neighborhood character. And that's one thing that certainly defines Sandpoint neighborhoods is every, every house looks a little different. And, and I think for any property owner there, it probably is in their best interest to have a rear fence on a, facing a busy street like that. So I would trust that that's something that would happen at the will of the property owner, if not the developer, the ultimate property owner. And then I would also agree, you know, with your, with your view on snow removal on East Mountain View as well. We maintain our multi-use paths and public right-of-ways throughout the city. And this is, I think, quite a request, request for, for the development to take that on in our public right-of-way. Regarding the bonding issue, you know, I think that that's, that's something that, that requires further review and study by staff and, and in this body to, to come to some determination of what the best practice is there in the future. I think to make a decision detracting from, you know, I mean, we just heard 10-13 right there. It's, we have clear directive in the code. And I think if we want to look at a different path in the future, we need to take a step back and take a hard look at an issue like that and, and look at making a change to the code if that's what it takes. So those are just, not that my opinion may matter at all here, but I thought it was only fair to add to the discussion. And just perfect timing, we have Councilor Sherman with us now. Shannon, we're dying to hear what your thoughts are with regards to this application. I think everybody said what they want to say at this point.
Sorry about that, everybody. Just having issues with the internet. And I, so I, it really cut out when Deb was speaking. I don't know what points she brought up, but Deb, if you have a moment to just quickly reiterate your thoughts, is that possible?
I suppose I could go through them quickly. The major point I made is we seem to be sort of perseverating on the fence issue. And it's, in my opinion, that the entire way the development was made is that it's turning its back on the community. And I think we could do better to turn those houses toward the community and change the whole look and feel of the northern part of Sandpoint. I also pointed out that I very much appreciate the work with KLT and the developer, but yet that we don't have any of that in writing. So historically, on council-making votes, I have been burned in that way, thinking something's going to happen, and it's not. I do understand through Fonda that, you know, KLT is not part of the agreement. So that is something that has to happen in a different way. And that was probably the most important, important point that I did make. And I guess I would just back that up with the fact that not pulling these opinions out of the air, I did sit on the planning commission for over two years myself. I did a lot of reading, you know, as far as one of the greatest, Jane Jacobs, who was not a formal planner, but saved many neighborhoods that are famous in New York City, such as Grinch Village. Also, Suburban Nation is also another excellent read that discusses how these cordoned-off subdivisions affect how neighbors and people interact with in the towns and different places. And then, as you all know, I was out of state with my father for one of our last council interactions and spent a lot of time in the suburbs of Atlanta. And many of these fences that you talk about cordon so many of those roads that it just doesn't give you the feel that Sandpoint gives you. It doesn't matter if it's a wooden fence or a beautiful black wrought iron fence or a masonry fence or a plastic fence. They are not welcoming and they exist everywhere. And I would hate to see Sandpoint create something like that.
Thank you. So again, I appreciate all the conversation about this tonight. And I, I can see how the timeframe that is of some concern to the applicant is an important point to raise. And I, I can appreciate the other council members' thoughts on that. Deb, I appreciate your comments on the fence. I don't have any strong feelings regarding, you know, how this should be designed. I think there could be some flexibility there. But I do feel, I have a lot of, feel a lot of caution around the bonding issue. And I do, like I said earlier, I appreciate the legal opinion that we've received on that tonight. That's pretty much my thoughts.
I think how I'd like to pursue, proceed now is entertain a motion to approve. And then it sounds like there's probably a fair amount of consensus there. And then if council chooses to amend the motion and make any of those suggested changes that were, that were brought up, that would be the time to do so. So with that, I move, I would entertain a motion that the City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the request by Tim McDonald, KM Enterprises of Idaho, LLC, and Derek Mulgrew, M&amp;W Holdings, LLC, for the University Park 152 lot proposed subdivision located at 1904 North Boyer Avenue with parcel ID numbers of RPS 00000150751A and RPS 00000151250A and bounded by East Mountain View to the north, North Boyer Ave. to the west, Sand Creek and Fifth Avenue to the east, and BNSF Railway tracks to the south and authorize the mayor to execute the development agreement as presented or possibly amended. Approval is subject to the following conditions. One, all conditions provided in the attached development agreement. Based on evidence, records and testimony, the reasons for approving this request are, one, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to subdivisions contained in Sandpoint City Code Title IX, Chapter IX. Two, based on information presented at the hearing and the placement of limitations through conditions, the application is in compliance with the subdivision and zoning requirements in Sandpoint City Code per the following justification. It is substantially in compliance with city code. It is substantially in compliance with adopted regulations and rules. And it is not in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the overall planning goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I want to add one thing before we get too far in this. And, and that is, or at least before we have a vote, I do want to thank, thank staff and thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know that this was a really drawn-out process. And I think the applicant, for their patience and for their thorough presentation this evening and previously at the council meeting or the planning and zoning hearing, excuse me. And I know everybody has, you know, really put a lot of effort into this. And, and I appreciate your hard work. And it's because of all of that contribution that we get, that we get a really fine application before us today. So I really applaud the applicant for, for their, for their endurance through this process and for, for really taking on, I think, a great project. Particularly, what I think really inspires me and probably many of us here is the, the dedication of, of open space to the community. That is really a great gift to the city and its residents, and it's really commendable. So I really appreciate that. And I think that speaks a lot to, to who you are as people and to your love and commitment to the community. So we are all grateful for that. So with that, I would open up the floor to any final discussion. And, and of course, if you want to make a further motion to amend the development agreement, then the floor is open for that as well.
Discussion-wise, I am confident that council agrees with Section 3, with the longer approval, the right of way to be flexible on when that can be put in. Fence standards, snow removal, I feel that we're all somewhat on the same page on that, and that could be amended. I don't feel that we're all on the same page with the bonding situation where possibly we can move to amend those one, two, three, four, five other conditions and possibly direct staff towards having more communication with the applicant towards the bond situation. Not sure if we need to make a motion for something like that.
So I'm unclear what, okay, the points that I heard, and I'm not putting words in your mouth.
No, no, no.
I'm asking to clarify what those were. So what I heard were the, the request for an expiration of 2025, extending it out five years rather than the two years.
Correct.
Two was flexibility on the right turn lane to defer building that right turn lane and based on future development. And it was suggested here that that would be contingent on development in that Phase Four.
Correct.
And three, to grant the applicant flexibility in material and design of the fence along Boyer.
Correct, correct.
Four was removing the requirement for removal of snow on the multimodal path on East Mountain Road.
Correct.
Was there something more? Did I miss something?
No, that was it. It was just more of not, not sure on the bonding.
Okay.
I have a procedural question just in this discussion. Are you anticipating an attempt to actually amend the development agreement by motion here tonight or direction to staff to make some amendments and bring it back to you at the next meeting for approval?
Direction to staff is what I'm hearing.
Okay.
So then we would have to, we would have to review it again.
Would not need a public hearing, but you would need to review it again. The issue on the extension of time for the build-out to 2025 is that the two years, as articulated in the development agreement, is pursuant to your city code with the one-year extension. The applicant was asked for a construction schedule that wasn't provided. And so that's why there's a disconnect is because without the construction schedule, that could be evaluated by you and approved. They had no choice, staff had no choice but to defer to city code and not within city code. So if your intention is to give direction to staff to allow a provision for the complete build-out to go through 2025, then that should also include negotiations with applicant, which with regards to the construction timing.
Then yes.
So your motion would be to approve the preliminary plat and to direct staff to make adjustments to the development agreement and bring it back for your approval at the next meeting.
Okay.
Councilman Grode, you're nodding your head. Yes, you like all that.
That sounds very clear and concise. I appreciate that.
Councilman Rule. Councilman Rule.
The pathway, cutting the block, is that something that needs to be discussed at this point? Or is that already?
That is in the development agreement?
Made by staff.
Yeah, that's in the development agreement.
Okay.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Councilor Sherman? You have something? No? Okay. Okay. So was that a, was that a motion to amend?
A motion to amend.
To direct staff to revise the development agreement with the, in consultation with the developer?
Motion to, are you, you already made it, you already suggested a motion to.
I suggested the motion and they're moving to amend to direct staff. So is there a second?
A second, okay.
This will be a roll call vote unless there's any further discussion.
To clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is a roll call vote on the amendment.
On the amendment, that's right. Thank you.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurre?
Yes.
Councilman Grode?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Okay, the amendment is approved. And now back to the main motion. This will be a roll call vote unless there's further discussion.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurre?
Yes.
Councilman Grode?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Motion passes. Okay. That was a quickie. The next item on the agenda is a proposed amendment to Sandpoint City Code 3124A2B, which seeks to align emergency egress standards with current building and fire codes. Does council have any questions?
No.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay. I will now read the title and ordinance as follows. In ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Title III, Chapter 12, Sandpoint City Code, short-term rental of dwelling units in order to align emergency egress standards with current building and fire codes, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication in an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and that the summary is approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Councilman Sherman, we didn't hear you.
Yes.
I didn't hear you. Yes, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McCallis? Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Grode?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only, and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety, be suspended, that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Grode?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Motion passed. This ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. With that, we move on to our final agenda item this evening. A presentation from Infrastructure and Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson on a proposed permit process that would provide a method for considering requests to use the city-owned watershed while maintaining water quality of the drinking water source as well as environmental stewardship. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to share my screen here. Okay. Good evening. So I'm going to provide a presentation this evening. No action is being requested from city council at this time. This is a, an overview prior to bringing to you any requests for action. I do request and encourage any feedback that you may have on this overarching review of the process so that we can make sure that when you get something before you for a decision, that it relatively aligns with the intent. Before I get into the weeds of the proposed permit process, I just wanted to give you an update that our consultants, Reeve Sherwood Consulting, has been actively working on developing our watershed management plan, as we've previously discussed with city council and the public at prior workshops. They were very productive this past summer and were able to complete a lot of the onsite assessments and spent a lot of time up in the watershed, walking through and identifying our roads and culverts and critical environmental areas. For a second. So remaining is to finalize the permit procedures, which we're going to go over this evening, as well as bring forward to city council a draft management plan for your review. I will get into the timelines of that process towards the end of this presentation. Just a short bit of history that I thought was relative to this conversation is we actually do not have a city code that addresses the watershed at all. If you were to search in our code, the word watershed doesn't actually come up. And so I'm going to get to kind of circling back to that element. But what we do have is some history within the city of Sandpoint via resolution, identifying some of the priorities and intents of the property that we own. As a reminder, it's about 7,800 acres on the northwest side of town. So in 1982, we provided a resolution, or city council provided a resolution, really identifying the importance of the watershed for clean, high-quality drinking water. That, at that time, was our primary source of drinking water for the city. In 1991, a resolution was further passed that included a management plan, very similar to what we're in the process of developing today, that identified what we can and can't do and shouldn't do in the watershed. And so I think that that history is important to note that water quality has always been the top priority by the city, and that was the purpose of purchasing that property. It was purchased by the water fund, so the ratepayers that pay for that actual property. Fast forward, we have done multiple years of resolutions for timber harvesting that is initiated by the city and really focused on overall health management of the forest to prevent fires and to ensure that the biological environment is as it should be. In 2015, city council actually provided a resolution that provided support for a water crest trail system in the watershed, at least a portion of the watershed. What's interesting and kind of the gap here that I wanted to point out is we have historically said no use in the watershed because we want water quality. No, hasn't worked. We have had trails even without permission over the years, and there is an overall public sense to use that space beyond that. 2015 was really the first time that city council actually recognized that, I would say, and kind of bought into support of any type of use in the watershed. Further, in 2019, city council provided a resolution that allowed Intermax to come in with fiber optic cable to Schweitzer Mountain, which also had an impact on the watershed. I think this is, this history is important to note before we get into the weeds of a permit process because if we're going to continue down the path of allowing uses in our watershed, the process that goes with that is really what we're here to talk about tonight. First and foremost, it would be good to start with a code and have a new ordinance that addressed this from the overarching perspective. That new ordinance would be coming to you later this month for your consideration, and it would really highlight the bullets that are in front of you. Specifically, codifying, if I can say it that way, our purpose and priorities in the watershed and formalizing that. Also, it would provide the obligation that we have a management plan and policies in place that we need to follow. It would also provide an overarching type of statement that if we're going to allow uses in the watershed, that they should be for a public benefit. So a restaurant might be nice up there. This code would potentially say that we don't want a restaurant in our watershed. I use that as a very simplified example. We could, if you wanted, then maybe we reconsider. And that we require permits. If you're going to use our watershed, we need a permit and a process to give you that permission to do so. And who's going to make that decision? Is it staff or is it city council? We are going to go through that tonight. And then also a reference to fees to process that application. So that's kind of the code component, and then we have the policies and the procedures that go with it. Okay, so if we're going to authorize activities in the watershed, we've tried to break this down into the types of activities that would be in the watershed or that requests might come to us. So the first section there, natural resources. So if somebody wanted to mine, if somebody wanted to build roads or parking lots or restrooms, what we are intending to propose and would appreciate your feedback on this is we're saying those three first bullets really need to be initiated by the city as part of an overall plan and not by the public in general. The types of requests or uses that seem to align with other watersheds and potentially reasonable requests to process by others would include utilities, fiber, electric, other types of uses in that regard. And then recreational. Recreational is really quite overarching. That could include trails for all different types of uses, hunting, camping. You could really go down a long path with what recreation means. And then events, so short duration type of events in the watershed. So the point with this slide is to say that if we were to provide options for those, the latter three, approving those, we are calling a permit. But really, that permit comes in a lot of different varieties, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. We don't issue the same type of permit for a utility company as we would for a recreational campground. And so there at the bottom, that's what we're getting at here, is the resulting authorizations would be unique and specific to address all the variety of factors that go into what's being requested. Right? So if it's a utility provider, that might result in an easement. We don't generally issue easements for trails on our property, right? But if someone wanted to have an event, we would issue an event permit. And so it's just the different legal mechanism that would be associated with that authorization. So to the process, this is the punchline of the conversation tonight. So if it is a general public access, if I want to go walk in the watershed, do I need a permit? We are proposing no. We would restrict some areas of the watershed in accordance with the future management plan. We're not saying you can be everywhere in our watershed, but if you want to go walk on a trail there, you don't have to come to us with a permit. I'm sure many of you have been, and have heard of that, right? At the Grand Junction type of hiking, you might need a permit to access it. That's not what we're saying here. Events, we would follow the city special event policy to approve any short durations. And then so for all the other types of activities that I listed on this slide, so utilities and recreational uses requested by others, the application process actually would be very similar. The first step would be providing a very simple application form narrative and map. This is what we want to do. City staff and number, step number two, would do an initial review and say, yes, this is in general conformance with a public benefit. We're going to go ahead and move this forward. In order to move it forward, we need X, Y, and Z from you based upon what you just asked to do in our watershed. So we give that basically a request for additional information to the applicant. That could include, based upon where you're at, we need a wetlands delineation. Based upon where you're at, we really need us to take a look at this additional critical area adjacent to it. So we would look at their initial proposal and tell them, we need you to do this because you've asked to do this activity. So very specific to that purpose. The applicant proceeds with that, so they do and provide us the information we've asked for. That could be additional wetlands delineation, like I mentioned. It could be additional mapping, whatever the request includes. Then we look to it for a completeness review. They pay the remaining fees, and we provide a letter of verification, basically saying you have done what we asked you to do. At that point, we are proposing that the complete application is released for a 30-day public notice and comment period. So this is parallel, or I would say similar, to what the state and feds do. So BLM, U.S. Forest Service, IDL, et cetera, have 30-day public comment periods. As an example, we're intending to put a culvert in our watershed, and that culvert right now is open for public comment. So it is not unprecedented in that regard. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
With BLM, I'm just kidding.
I didn't even think of it in that regard. The Bureau of Land Management.
Okay.
The next process after the 30-day public comment period, step number six would be to have a public hearing at council and have city council approve that use. Upon that approval, we would execute whatever legal documents were part of that approval process. And then the applicant would do what they requested, and staff would do compliance monitoring and inspections. So that is the eight-step process that we are proposing to bring forward. I also wanted to mention that the terms of those legal documents and the request for additional information would be based upon a variety of factors. Again, based upon the type of use, a campground's going to be different than a trail or a utility. So we might ask for insurance for the work that's being done. If it's a performance bond potentially, we might need certified professionals to evaluate wetlands, et cetera. We might actually tell an applicant, just as we did Intermax, before we can process this request, you need to follow through with getting the federal permits that are required for this work. And we're going to wait to process your request until you actually have that federal approval because at times, the federal or the state process actually supersedes our process. It's more refined and detailed. And then we would also say from a terms perspective that you need to comply with our watershed management plan that is coming forward to council for review and that. And it would provide pretty detailed references and/or indices regarding any standards, such as the Bureau of Land Management Environmental Compliance Handbook or the United States Forest Service Trail Construction Plans. So our watershed is not unique in that it is a piece of land desired for public use. And these other agencies that I have mentioned already have processes similar to this to approve this type of use. So instead of reinventing the wheel, let's refer to those standards that already exist. And then last but not least, because arguably quite important, is if we're going to say a utility needs an easement, it needs to be surveyed to be an actual easement. So that's, this is just an example of why there's not a one-size-fits-all. So last but not least, next steps. What we're proposing is to get your feedback on this, the process that's in front of you tonight, and then come forward again at the next meeting with a draft ordinance, but not ask you for action. So not approval, just this is, these are the details that we're requesting you to consider, along with a draft procedure and policy, again, not asking for action at the November 18th meeting. We're proposing this because these are, these are completely new. We are not amending an existing code. This is a new code, and we're saying that this schedule here in front of you is intended to provide as much due process as possible for the public to weigh in and then bring it back to you on the December 16th meeting to consider and make a decision on, with the intent of also at that time bringing to you the draft watershed management plan and then coming back in January again with the final plan and processing applications beginning in February. So with that, I will open it up for any questions or feedback.
Deb does.
That's one rule.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Amanda, questions would be, can you go back to the last slide, please? Okay, so when is our application process actually going to be formalized? And how does that? I know there's a big conflict in potentially building trails in the watershed and grants that have to be turned in by the first of the year. And there's been a lot of dates over time where I feel like I've been in the mud for five years working on this process. So I was under the impression we were going to be ready to roll in, you know, May at some point. It got pushed to August at some point, that now feels like it's getting pushed to February. And grants for, you know, the next year, of course, have to go in, and so that pushes back things really far. So what can we do to accommodate that?
Mr. Mayor, may I? Really great question, Councilwoman, and I appreciate your thoughts there. So staff have had conversations even as recent as today with the various groups that intend to construct trail or are requesting to construct trails in our watershed. My comments to you would be that regarding the grant opportunities and the deadlines associated with that, interestingly enough, the 2015 resolution provides very clear support for a water crest trail. That resolution is sufficient for applying for a grant. What it doesn't say is this is exactly where the water crest trail would go, but it is providing the city support for that trail. So it was my understanding from conversations that that would be sufficient for that application. And as I know you're aware, but I'm not sure to build that trail and then constructed in, you know, the next four to six plus years, working on it piece by piece. And so the intent would be, once this process is approved, to start working through the weeds of where exactly would this go and doing the assessments that would be necessary for that. As far as the Lower Basin Trail that is intended to be constructed this spring, the feedback we received is that ideally, construction would start in late June, early July. And so this process actually does provide that that construction could begin when the trail builders trail builders would like to start their work and that they are not actually seeking grant funding that would require approval of the exact location of that trail as a result of it. So I appreciate that this process feels like it's taking a long time. There are a variety of reasons for that, because it's in part very complex, and number two, because we have a lot of other priorities happening at this time. I will say that this process here, you asked specifically, when would we be able to process applications? It would technically be in February. However, we have asked if they are willing to go and mark where in the Lower Basin they would like the trails to be in the future, and we have agreed that we would do our site walk in advance of city council approving this process, so that if city council approves this process, that we have done the on-the-boo, boots-on-the-ground, it's getting late, review so that that isn't further drug out next year. So we have, I think, done our best to work with the timeframes that we can. Does that help or answer your question?
Well, for whatever reason, you cut out a little bit.
We can't hear you. Counselor Rule?
I should, you should be able to hear me.
Yeah, we're not getting any volume there.
Let's see. Oops. Can you hear me now?
Keep talking.
Can you hear me? No.
Maybe your headset isn't working there.
I can hear.
Okay, yeah, we still can't hear you, Deb.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? And will she figures that out?
Just thank you, that was a lot of work you're putting into it, so we appreciate it.
Hello?
Okay. So November 18th, makes sense to do that in a workshop format? It's not, not an action item, but we're inviting public feedback on that and...
We have a public hearing that night, Mr. Mayor. So, that I would expect we would have a lot of participation in. I think it would be a little bit challenged with the structure with how we've done the workshops and the public hearing, too.
Deb, are you there?
I'm trying, I can hear you.
Yeah, we still can't hear you, unfortunately.
Hear me now?
Sorry.
Can't hear me at all. I have no idea why you're not hearing me.
Anything? All right, well, do you know sign language?
Yeah, I know one.
Maybe you can call in?
Yeah, here we go.
Thumbs up if you want to talk. Oh.
She's good.
Oh, look at that. Wow, okay, that's good.
Do you want her number?
Thumbs up if you want to talk. Jennifer's sending you the number.
You want to call her, Melissa?
I guess Melissa's calling you, that's what's happening.
Okay. She's giving it now. She's happy.
Does she even want to talk?
423. 514. 0084. 084. 0084.
Hello?
Hello.
Hey, Deb. Apparently, people at home can hear me, but you guys in the chambers can't.
Ah.
So I don't know what's going on with that. Yes. Okay, I just muted my computer, so we're not getting double feed that.
I lost my train of thought.
I lost my train of thought.
I guess the biggest piece for a man that I would have is to, we're not going to really have any delays with all the hard work the bike group has put in.
You know, we're still going through this process. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Yes, I would say we would not have delays unless city council chooses not to approve the proposed ordinances or procedures. But we are intending to move forward as shown in the slide here.
Okay, and then?
Okay, and then I had one other question relative to the granting processes and if the bike group would be working through our grant systems or if they would be going for their own grants and how that affects all of this.
For the watershed, the intent would be that the user requesting use of the watershed would be applying for their own grants and not going through the city's grant writer.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have some further discussions.
I'll have some further discussions.
Don't need to happen here.
That don't need to happen here about that.
Has there been a request for the city to participate with that time?
That I'm aware. And this is a different, this is a different process. So typically, when it's city land and we're doing a project, we're constructing something on city land, that it's our project, we're applying for the grants. But in this case, where we're permitting somebody else to essentially build something, maintain something on our property, then the grants would be through that entity that is responsible for that trail, because that's, that's how the permitting would work, which is not our...
Okay, that makes it more clear.
Great. Anything else from council? All right. Excellent work, Amanda. Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mrs. Cox, for coming to join us this evening.
Jennifer.
Jennifer.